We will start the meeting. This one is going to have some, just a little different procedure. We're gonna, we need to go into an executive session before we have the combined session, okay? Also, at that time, while we're in executive session, I'm gonna get 'em to rearrange these tables and get y'all closer to us and set things up a little bit differently. But we need to go into executive session to gain some knowledge from council about what we can and cannot do under your bylaws and those kinds of things. So that'll happen, and so I want everyone to kind of understand how this will work this morning. We'll have a call for prayer, we'll have the pledges, we'll have public comment, we'll get through the consent agenda, then we will go into executive session, and that won't last long, but it's just explanations. And then, we will come back and start the combined meeting, and then we'll go into the regular agenda. So that's gonna be the way things move around. Right? Okay. So at this time, let me ask, is she not here? That's interesting. So, whose turn is it to lead us in prayer? Mr. Silves? Mr. Silves will lead us in prayer this morning.
Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you again for this day. Father, we thank you for your many blessings. I pray that you be with us today, Father, and just help us make the right decisions that are, that come before us. Be with each and every member up here, be with all the people in attendance, and again, Father, just watch over us and, again, bless us with your spirit, and thank you again for everything you give us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Do I have a card?
Yes.
You have like an obstacle course this morning trying to come help? She's got that composure. This is Piper Boden, and she's a third grader at Cornerstone Christian School. She's gonna help me with the pledges this morning. This is Piper Boden.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
This is school board recognition month, and I saw several of you. Do I have several joining me, or do I have one joining me, or? Why don't y'all come, send the entourage? This is from our San Angelo Independent School District. We have Lanny Lehman, who's the board president, and Bill Dindal, who's the single-member District One board member, and then others are here from the school district. So, welcome all, and we have a proclamation this morning. Take those off so I can read it. Whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world, and whereas local school board members are committed to children and believe all children can be successful lifelong learners, and that the best education is tailored to the individual's needs, individual needs of each child, and whereas local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students, and whereas local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system, and whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore, I, Alvin New, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, on behalf of the city council, do hereby declare our appreciation to the members of the San Angelo Independent School District and proclaim the month of January 2013 as School Board Recognition Month.
Thank you for the work you do, guys. Thank you. The mayor said I could recognize a few of our team. I hope I can remember everyone. I see Jeff Bright, he's one of our assistant superintendents. Stand up, Jeff. Steve Van Hoosier's running our bond project. He's worked for the district for a number of years, but has really worked hard on our bond project. Steve Gill and Stephanie, y'all stand up together. They're our executive directors of schools. Dr. Carl Detloff is one of our assistant superintendents. Jamie Highsmith is in charge of our public relations. She's the one that made sure I got here today. Marta Turney is our, the board secretary, and I depend upon her a whole lot during our meetings. And finally, I thank Dr. Carol Ann Bonds, our superintendent's here. So, I want to thank y'all for y'all's recognition, and certainly on behalf of the over 2,000 school district employees and the 14,000 students that were, had the honor and privilege of serving on behalf of, then I thank y'all for that very much. We appreciate you.
Also, this morning, I have a recognition, and so I would like to bring Brian Groves up here, and how do you take pictures and be in a picture?
There's Anthony. You know, I can take pictures there, there's Anthony.
First thing we need to do is ask Brian if he wrote this.
I did not.
Okay. Anthony, did you write this? Okay. It's all right. I just want, I don't want Brian writing his own stuff, so, all right. Here are just a few of the many good things I could say about Brian's recent works, and I'm going to. Brian Abely filled in as the interim Public Information Officer from June to September, running a two-person operation solo, maybe we should think about that, through months of drought, a city manager search, and budget, just to name a few issues. Brian is responsible for the programming on Channel 17, including all of the videography, production, and scheduling. Among the recent programming, he has spearheaded the pet adoption spots, which has led to the adoption of each animal featured thus far. Nice. Employee spotlights, which highlight some of the city's excellent public servants. The City, a new interview show that he produces. A series of videos updating progress on the Concho River improvements. San Angelo scenery, short video tributes to some of the most beautiful spots in the city. Water conservation tips starring horticulturist John Begno. A special report on street maintenance. Additionally, he championed a new San Angelo promotional video that will soon debut for use by the city, the chamber, our economic development partners, and other local entities. He has been the website's chief caretaker and will be instrumental in the redesign and implementation of the new site. He has been the city's forebearer of social media, ensuring a strong presence and following on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. So I'd like to recognize Brian for all the work he does for the city. Thank you, Brian. The council takes public comment on all items in the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda, or on the consent agenda, may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request that an item be placed on a future agenda, or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. So council, do we have items to move, or Mr. Morrison?
I don't have any items to move, but I do have a request, and I realize that the time to say this is at the end of the meeting, but I will be leaving at 10:15 to be with my wife through a medical procedure, so I will not be here. I have had calls from several people in my area that have asked that we appoint Don Vorderman to fill Fred Adams' seat. I realize this takes a unanimous vote of the council, so I throw that out, that there is some interest in that, and to kind of give the council the ability to think about it. If there is a consensus, then I'll have it put on the agenda next meeting. We'll consider it. Also, I talked last night, I texted last night with Steve McGlaughlin, and he has asked that we pull number 23 from the agenda, so that's all I've got.
Number 12, also on the skyline.
I'll do that. Hang on just a second, please. 23 is on the regular agenda?
Regular, yes.
It is on the regular agenda. So it'll be tabled.
So you're just tabling it to the next meeting?
Post-bond.
Okay. Got it. Are there others items to be pulled from the agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda, and I'll also say motion to table item number 23.
Second. Okay, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda and to table item number 23. You guys, out of courtesy, I need to make sure that one of these consent agenda items is, is okay with Ms. Farmer. Okay. Let me call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. At this time, then, I need to see if there's public comment on items that are not on the agenda? Is there any public comment? Come on up.
This is Linda Williams, and I wanted to make sure she got up here, and she has some questions for us. It is, it is an obstacle course. Sorry about that, Linda. It's not normally like this. Right there, there's a microphone. Linda is from SMD One, and she has comments, or questions.
Good morning. As Paul said, I'm Linda Williams, and I do live in his district. And last year on...
Ma'am, could you pull the mic down just?
Yes, how's that? Better? Okay, thank you. Last year on July 22nd, I sent an email to Paul and this group regarding the Ben Ficklin Action Baseball Academy. I had a lot of questions regarding the operation. To date, I have not received any answer to my email, other than that they recognized from my email that it was residentially zoned, and they would have to look into it. Okay, my questions now are still valid, because now the sign is up that they are going to change the zoning. So my questions had to do with the designated area, and I'm representing the neighborhood, and we want to know, you know, what are the, just simple things, that I think that need to be answered before you can go forth with the business of this type. What are the hours of operation? What are the number of days per week that the field will be in use? What are the number of participants that will utilize a facility per day, per week, per year? What's the projected increase in traffic for the area? What is the projected increase in noise for the area? What is the projected increase in the amount of trash for the area? Are there any plans to expand the low-water crossing, which is a one-lane road that goes underneath the bridge at the Ben Ficklin Crossing? You also noted that they would pave the parking area. What requirements from engineering will be in place to ensure that the drainage ditch that fronts the Ben Ficklin Road will not flood, as it does now, causing damage to the homes and their property? And if the proposed five-year lease with a one-year-out clause is abandoned by Action Baseball Academy, which I see on his website, he's now changed to Action Baseball Camp, what are the plans for the abandoned structure? And these are the questions we brought up last year, and we still have these questions.
Okay. They're very appropriate questions, but they're more appropriate for the person in the city staff who is taking on the negotiation of that contract, and so the city is, the city council is a policy board, so we give guidance to the staff, and then we give them direction on what they should do, but we don't go into the details of, what are the business hours and those kinds of things. We, we give guidelines, and then they take on that responsibility. So I would suggest to you that, that your questions here aren't going to be answered to your satisfaction, but an appointment, an appointment with Mr. Valenzuela, or an appointment with somebody in city staff will get you headed down the right path.
And she knows, she knows that. I explained that to her, that we can't, we cannot discuss it. She knows that. But, in six days, the planning commission hears this zoning change, and they're still without the answers they need, so it becomes urgent with six days left, when she's been waiting six months for some of the answers.
We'll get, actually, we'll get it scheduled within the next couple of days. I'll sit down with A.J. Fowler, also with the planning department, and we'll schedule a time to sit down with you and address those questions, okay?
Okay.
And so, what I'll do is I'll take the email, and what I have, and send it to you, so that you, and I explained that to her as well. We have a new city manager that needs to be caught up with where his staff is, and he will see it through, and we'll get this answer before the meeting with the planning commission on the 28th, I believe, that's Monday, I think.
There's another way to handle that, though, just by contacting him and setting up a meeting.
Well, there's, there's a...
Anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
She's representing a lot of people. Let me say that there's a lot of people, it's kind of a brand-new issue. Thank you, Linda.
Are there other public comments? Come on up.
My name is Gail Stefanski, and I am in District One, and only last week, on Thursday, did I see a sign go up at Ben Ficklin Park requesting a zoning change. I did go down to the planning commission, and I was told that only people who live within 200 feet get notices about this. This is a public park. It is used by hundreds of people. I would say about, oh, 65 to 70% are low-income people. That baseball field was set up by the Lions Club for low-income children. It is now going to be a baseball training camp for $500 a month to train there, and it will, or you can take a, a three-week course for $750. That excludes the kids who use this park. This park is really a unique park in the city of San Angelo. It is a natural area. It does not have swings, it does not have, it's not a playground, it's a natural area. It's a flyway. It's a flyway for ducks, it's a flyway for cranes. They want to put in, as I have learned from going to the planning commission, asphalt. This is a watershed. They want to have a commercial venture. What other parks in San Angelo have a commercial venture for that, for elite kids? It was just not set up that way, and people go there because it is an oasis, it is pastoral, it is a beautiful place where you can hear fish jump. That's how quiet it is. Fishermen use it, hikers use it, mothers with toddlers use it, little boys after school come exploring. Cyclers meet there to go cycling. There are runners on Ben Ficklin Road, there are walkers on Ben Ficklin Road. I am here to speak for the park and the people who use the park, because a park cannot speak for itself. So I would ask you to seriously consider putting this commercial, expensive venture for elite children somewhere else, not in a fragile ecological environment. The only park on that side of the, it's the only park, just one. People come here, little ladies come here in the morning. I see one little lady every morning who, who comes in her house robe in her SUV and drinks coffee, because it's beautiful. I see people come for breakfast to her workman, because it's beautiful, and it's quiet. I see the same workman come back at lunch and eat. I see people who, who, yes, I'm gonna give you an example. Yesterday, I'm asking people to write to you and tell you about this park. Yesterday, I walked up to a man, and I said, "Do you use this park regularly?", because I'm, I'm trying to tell people what's happening to it. He said, "No, this is my first time. I stopped here because it's just so beautiful. In fact, I just called my wife in Montana, and I said, 'You're not gonna believe what I found in San Angelo.' He said, 'But I'll write a letter for you if you'll tell me who to write a letter to.' So I implore you, do not destroy Ben Ficklin Park." And, and a pay $500 a month, a pay $750 for, for a three-week course with batting cages and a commercial venture does not belong here. Try somewhere else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other public comment? Okay. I'm gonna pull us into executive session, okay? At this time, I'm going to, to take us into executive session to get some advice from council, and so, excuse me? Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna ask Ms. Bowling, but are we 15 to 30 minutes?
Half to less.
Okay. Let's, we're thinking we're 15 minutes in executive session, so, some in that timeframe, and so let me, let me take us into executive session. We'll be back in roughly 15 minutes, maybe slightly longer. And I think I normally say one thing, and it's normally just a bit longer than that, so, okay? It is, yes, we will leave the room, so those that are in the room will not have to leave. There's simply too many of you. It'd just be easier for us to leave. So, let me start. Folks, let me keep your attention till I get us taken out of this regular committee, regular meeting into executive committee, okay? All right, this, under executive committee law, I need to read something. It's 9:32, we're gonna move into executive or closed session. Under provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to the requirement that meetings be open to consult with an attorney under Section 551.071. So we move into executive session at this time. See you in roughly 15 minutes. At this time, it is 9:59, and I'll bring council back out of executive session, ask that we open a joint meeting here between the city council and the development corporation, and we'll operate under a special agenda. At this time, what I'll do is open the, and bring council into that meeting. Mr. Teague, if you would open the meeting for your board.
I call the meeting of the City of San Angelo Development Corporation to a special joint meeting with the city council. To order.
Okay. Okay, so both entities are called to order, and we, we can now trans, transact business according to our agenda, okay? Basically, we have one item. This is the consideration and possible action regarding the City of San Angelo Development Corporation administrative procedures, included, including purchasing procedure, project approval levels, and other areas within the scope and purview of the COSA-DC Board, possibly including establishing a more efficient means of obtaining council approval. I'll leave it at that, and, and move forward from there. Mr. Teague, would you guys like to start us off and introduce your thoughts, and let us go from there?
Okay. Our thoughts are that we are trying to streamline the process on projects when we have budget numbers and contingencies built in, that we don't have to bring everything back, as long as we're in, in the budget mode, I mean, not $1 over, that we can have the authority to do change orders or stuff without having to bring it back to city council for ever approval, as long as we are in budget.
Okay, and, and what do you think is required to create that? Does it require any changes in your bylaws, or does it just require a permission?
Well, our bylaws pretty well say that we have to bring everything for y'all's approval. The way I understand it, is that not right, Ms. Bowling?
Yes.
Okay. And that's why, as long as we're in budget, that's what we were trying to...
So are you saying your bylaws now require you to bring expenditures to council for approval, which comports with state law? Is, if I heard you right? So yes, the current bylaws are in line with state law.
State law, okay.
Okay. The, the, did I fall off? All right. I've been waiting, I've been waiting for that to happen. Yeah. It was supposed to make it until May, but this is as good a time as any. Anyway.
I've been waiting a long time to say that.
I got one, two, three, four, five, six council members. I'm, I'm, welcome any of you to speak, or I would just continue to let them walk through what they're thinking, try to get that articulated clearly, whatever you'd like. I do think it might be quickly important, because we're being recorded, just to start with Mr. Schneeman, and walk around that table, and let you introduce yourselves, so that, that anyone watching this knows who, who they're watching, and, and so forth, if you don't mind.
I'm Robert Schneeman, interim director of Economic Development.
Pedro Ramirez, member of the COSA-DC Board.
John Barrio, also a member of the COSA-DC Board.
Randy Brooks, member of COSA-DC Board.
Larry Teague, chairman of COSA-DC Board.
Chris Cornell, member of the board.
Scott Tankersley, member of the board.
Cindy Harton, economic development coordinator.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anything that any of you would like to add to what Mr. Teague has said at this point? Mr. Teague, I'm sorry for recognizing people on your board. You're welcome to take that over, but is there anything further before I let council start asking questions?
Well, I think Mr. Schneeman could probably make a real succinct presentation, kind of about the item and how it came about, and what we're, you know, how we're seeking to streamline the process. If I can, of course, we had a PowerPoint, but we've, we've sort of moved things around, so, as Ms. Bowling pointed out, we are currently operating in accordance with state law, which says that all programs and expenditures of the Economic Development Corporation must be approved by, in this case, city council, or the creating public body. However, it also goes on to say that, and that the city council will annually review financial statements of the corporation. Corporation's authorizing unit is entitled to access the corporation's books and records at all times. What our question is, I don't think there's any doubt that, that city council is required to approve all expenditures made by COSA-DC. I think the question comes up, does that mean each and everyone individually, or does that mean, and it's sort of overall approval at the budget stage, for example, or perhaps at the beginning of a project? If, if we could present a project to sta, to council in such a way that we were asking for approval of, for example, selection of an architect, selection of a contractor, execution of a contract, and a total budget for the project, and then perhaps not have to bring it back to council unless it went over that approved budget amount, or the scope of the project changed significantly from what council had approved to begin with. I think in a nutshell, that's really what we're talking about. I think in a nutshell, that's really what we're talking about.
Okay. On the feedback, I know from being here for three years, if you... Any of you have your phone in your pocket or any of those kinds of things up close to the mic, that's going to cause the feedback. Ms. Harton, if you have anything going out and back, like emails or things like that feeding your computer, they're going to cause feedback.
And if Scott's iPad is 3G, that'll do it. Nope?
So, those are the kinds of things for you to know or we'll deal with that the whole time, okay?
Usually AT&T.
Okay. Now, I think there are legitimate... I understand your issue fairly well. I think there's some legitimate concerns about how to move that forward, if we move that forward. And so, I think maybe some of the council members could ask you direct questions or give you some idea why they think maybe that doesn't work and... Or couldn't work. And so, let's start that discussion back and forth and see where we land on this, okay? Okay. And again, basically, the way you articulated it, Mr. Schneeman, was we oversee your budget on an annual basis. And so, then do we need to see each item that comes along during the year related to a specific project and approve that project if we've already approved something? And so, I'll let some others kind of start walking you through what they think and how they think, okay? I've got Mr. Hurstfeld and Mr. Morrison, so I'll start with Mr. Hurstfeld, then Mr. Morrison, and then Ms. Farmer.
I guess a couple of things. I'm not... Excuse me. I'm not sure who drafted the, you know, your proposed bylaw changes, but I'm assuming that y'all have read through this and this is what y'all are hoping and planning and would like to have. Because what... I'm sorry, Larry. What you described and what is described is not what is described in here. It's not. I mean, what you're describing in here is basically complete autonomy of all budget items, period, end of story.
Well, I thought, basically, I mean, is that the new bylaw changes that he's looking at?
Those are the ones that were originally proposed to COSA DC. They were requested through the city clerk's office, I understood, by council. We're not married to those by any means. I think they were... You're right. They probably were way more extreme than, I think, than we were even hoping for. They were basically drafted by, I think, by my predecessor and so, we're not married to those by any means.
Okay. And then, I guess, the second thing, and this should come as... Should not come as a surprise to any of y'all down there. I've been at your retreat. I've talked to you guys. You guys have heard my opinions. This is Kendall's opinion. We are elected bodies. You guys are appointed bodies. And I say "guys" in a generic sense, so, anyway. But we are the ones that are directly accountable to the taxpayers. And what you guys are spending is taxpayer money. And the only conduit that we have for responsibility, direct responsibility back to the taxpayer that is supplying that money is through these elected officials. That is my opinion. That's where I believe that it is. You know, I... Again, I've stated that crystal clear at least two, three, four, five times to all of y'all as a group, individually, whatever. And so, I still stand by that, that I feel that we have an ultimate responsibility to our taxpayer that we cannot let go of and that we have to be accountable to our taxpayer. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Morrison?
Very well said. I wanted to make my statement because in about five minutes, I've got to leave. Larry Teague is my appointee and has been for many, many years, and I'm very proud of the job that you have done. But two years ago, there were five letters sent out to members of COSA DC and five new members were put on the board. Larry Teague stayed on because I wanted him to stay. I don't want to give y'all more authority. I want everything y'all do to come through us. Because when something goes wrong, it's not Teague that takes the hit. It's me because I appointed him. And I want to know where every dollar is being spent. If there is a change order, I want to know about it. And I do not want the authority given to COSA DC that should belong to the elected members of this council, and I will not support this.
Okay. Ms. Farmer?
The bylaws were set up according to state law. And for you to ask for complete autonomy in what you're wanting to do and complete control over half-cent sales tax money is a little disturbing for me because of opinions. You know, there's seven opinions up here is to what is good or not good. And we take your opinions collectively is to recommendations on a project and weigh those opinions and most of the time find in favor of your opinion. So, I have to ask myself, why? Why? Do you want to take something that is not in state law, the way I'm understanding it, and change it? For what purpose? The purpose of it being transparent, clear line item spent, every dollar that is in half-cent sales tax is of the utmost importance to me. It has taken a good 10 years to earn the trust of the public and how that money is spent. And when the arguments have come up from the public about, "Well, why can't we raise policemen's salaries and use that half-cent sales tax money?" We have labored over these explanations to the public that money can only be spent as intended. I'm not saying that you would knowingly spend it on something that it wasn't intended. I'm just saying, as it is set up, it has the watchful eye of the finance department, accounting department, the legal department, and council. And in something that is dealing with public funds, this is the taxpayers' money. It needs those watchdog and those eyes. And I have to ask you, why would the seven of you want total autonomy over spending that money?
I can speak to that.
Let me recognize you in just a moment, okay? And first, let me just be sure I don't have any other council members that want to... I'm going to definitely get you on... Into the discussion. I just want to let you go ahead and answer different questions. And Mr. Teague, it's your board. You decide how you want to recognize folks and those things as we get to it. But let me finish letting folks give you an idea of what they're thinking and then let the discussion start back and forth. Mr. Silva?
I just wanted to add that, you know, a couple of months ago, there was an item that slipped through the cracks, so to speak. It was a $100,000 item that, you know, we took the hit for, you know? It just never should have happened the way it happened. So, right now, you know, and I don't want to spend here all morning. You know, we've got other items to discuss, but I'm very much interested in hearing that, you know, every other department, and from now on, we are going to look at it even with a microscopic, you know, whatever you want. We're going to look at it real close. There's a $50,000 threshold policy that we have out there, and I have no problem with that. Because in the end, you know, it's not Pedro Ramirez or Larry Teague or Chris that, you know... In the end, it's going to be these council people that have to answer to those folks out there that put us in these seats. So, that's what I'm saying. It's just, I'm very much interested and I don't... I don't... I heard the comment that maybe you guys feel like you have to jump through hoops to get things done. I haven't seen very many projects come to us, other than the... What do we call it? The barn? What was that?
Cattle barn.
The cattle barn. I mean, that's the last thing I remember. And I appreciate the job you guys are doing. Don't take me wrong. I, you know, I applaud you for what you're doing. So, but to keep us in the loop is just... Is what of utmost importance to me, to this council person. So, again, if it's $50,000 that you have to come to us, so be it. And that's all I'll say.
Okay. Mr. Alexander, do you want to speak before I...
Yes.
Okay.
There always seems to be another side. And I'll say that... I'll bring it up, that flexible organizations that are able to make quick decisions based on a clear mission, a clear vision succeed more often than organizations that are heavy-handedly controlled and you shall, you know, every single move is watched. Those organizations are less flexible, they're less creative. And so, there's something to be said for what you're saying and what you're asking for because it could make you more effective in what you're doing. And so, I think that you have to respect flexibilities, creativity and what it brings to the table, its effectiveness. So, there's something there. And there's also accountability that we're looking for here from the council. So, there's a balance between these two. And so, for example, if you brought to me a block of projects that is phase one of a project, that's all the planning, your engineer and your architect, and said, "This is what we expect to spend," and asked for approval, Councilman Alexander is going to look at that, the whole package, and I'm going to be able to say, "Yes, I can approve that." Because there's benchmarks in place. I can see if you're out of line, in line, and you go and you seek appro... You do your deal on your own, phase one, and we don't have to see every single transaction because it's understood. It's part of a project. It's understood, phase one. So, to me, that's within balance and that is something acceptable, in my opinion. But clear benchmarks to make sure that you guys are on track have to be established at all time or we lose control up here. Because it could be a problem that gets worse, festers, and by the time we get a hold of it and understand what's going on, it's way too late. That can't happen. So, when you guys are thinking of what you want to propose, maybe if you make some modifications, think about flexibility and think about accountability, make sure they're in balance. And I think that I could say, "Yes."
Okay. Mr. Alexander? I would like to see you add some explanation while you're talking to Mrs. Farmer's why question. You can respond to anything else you've heard, but one of the things about approving things kind of on an annual basis and then giving you a lot of leeway through the year that would be a problem for me is the future actions part of your budget, okay? So, in other words, I could not see myself allowing that to be unencumbered, okay? It's different to say the taxpayers, from my perspective, it's different to say the taxpayers have passed a ballot measure and allowed $500,000 to be spent on the airport and $1 million to be spent on a cattle barn and so much to be spent on the river. And you're administering those projects, which are pre-approved with a ceiling on the budget. And if the council said something along the lines of, "You can administer the cattle barn process and you cannot spend more than $1 million." If you spend $1 million and $1, you have to come back to the council, would be an approach. But the future items would give you carte blanche to open negotiations on things that don't exist, and I don't see my ability to support that. So, you'd have to curb even further than the once-a-year oversight for me to understand that there's a path forward for what you're asking for. So, I want you to talk about that. And the second thing is what Mr. Alexander spoke to, I want some specificity on, you know, if you had the administration of the cattle barn, for instance, and something happens and it has to go out for change order or it has to come back through a bidding process, is your bidding process different from any bidding process that the rest of the city staff has to go through? Do you look for something that's different in its look than what the purchasing department has to do? Because I think for us, there's some comfort that this is done a certain way, bids are let a certain way, and there's no chance that those things then don't comply with state law. And there's no chance that someone gets a bid without it being fundamentally put out properly and all those kinds of things. So, I want you to address that a little bit. And I want you to address the worst-case scenario that Mr. Alexander talked about, where you have $1 million to spend and because something goes wrong, it's now going to, you know, supposedly going to cost $1.2 million. I don't think we want to catch that after it's supposed to cost $1.2 million. And that's... So, you've got to address, why would we not be involved along the way so that we can see that coming, just like you see it coming? So, those are the things that I think need to be talked about while you're walking us through this project. So, Mr. Teague, why don't we shift this and let y'all discuss things for a while and let us know what you're thinking and some of the answers and thoughts that you might have, okay?
Okay. Well, the autonomy that we asked for in the beginning, when we found out that the state law regulated that, and we had the meeting last week with you, Mr. New and Mr. Valenzuela, it changed pretty dramatic and so I'm...
Backed up.
Yeah. And I'm pretty much on stage with, and I'm kind of...
Excuse me, Larry. Can you pull your mic up closer, please?
And I'm kind of unexpectedly, you know, where the autonomy changed, we didn't... We realized we couldn't have the full autonomy of the whole project. But like what we discussed in that meeting, where if we get a budget amendment passed for $1 million, as long as we don't go over that $1 million, I mean, a perfect example is just like the BRC where they had to come back for some approvals the other day to finish the project. And we still weren't over budget, but we had to come for approval. That's some of the stuff we're trying to, you know, present in a manner that we don't...
Yeah. So, the BRC is the Business Resource Center and you're basically saying, "Look, we have a budget. We're renovating that building and remodeling that building and then... And we changed some things we want to do to the building, but we didn't spend a penny more than we were going to spend. We'd like to just be able to go ahead and make that decision and move forward and not have to go back through that process."
Right. And the whole deal is, you know, when you do a remodel of an old building, you always run into some unforeseen. But the unforeseen still didn't go beyond our budget. And so, therefore, it took our time, y'all's time, and then back and forth, and we weren't over budget when we finished the project. That's what we were trying to streamline.
Okay.
We know we'll never get the autonomy to have a open checkbook, as precise.
Okay. So, let's back up and talk about the things that are in between there, though. How do we govern? How do we... How do we take care of you not running over budget if something happens that requires more money than you've been given in your budget? And that idea that all of a sudden, $1 million really needs to be $1.2 million or...
When we address that problem, I guess we bring it to you because it is over budget at that time.
Okay.
The opposite is true, too. If you're way under budget and you have $200,000 left over, it sounds like you guys would spend that money maybe on some extra stuff you weren't planning and... See, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, you give me what your goals are and you fulfill them, and I can go for that. But if you have extra money and you put added LED lights outside and it gets real fancy and... That's not what I was talking about. That extra money, we need to hold that back and the council has to be a part of that process. So, you see, my guidelines are, you tell us what you're going to do, you achieve it, that's okay. But anything extra is not okay.
Can I ask a simple question? I mean, most of really what you're talking about is contractual, the construction-type projects and such like. That... Am I correct? That's kind of the gist of where the focus?
I think we're talking about our entire budget document. We're talking about any of the programs that we're involved in annually, public housing, any of the ongoing incentive packages.
Okay. When you talk the total budget, that's where, again, I have trouble because, again, I'm going to accentuate with what Mayor New said, and that is item number 452900, future projects, there's almost $1.4 million in that. I am not going to give y'all carte blanche on $1.4 million. Period.
For future projects.
For future projects.
And they're undefined, the taxpayer hasn't had input.
I don't think our staff has put that in front of us yet.
Okay.
I don't have a copy of it.
That's a problem that I've got on that. I mean, and really, the point of where I'm going is, is how many... I mean, most of the projects that y'all have been administering up to this point have been ballot items. How many more ballot items are there to come out to be administered? Mr. Dane? I mean, are we... I mean, are most of the ballot items on there? I mean, are they done?
We still have ballot items ahead of us that are yet to be accomplished.
I mean, one, five, 10?
Less than 10, I think. But the first one that comes to mind is the Fort Concho work.
Okay.
That's still in concept at this point.
Okay.
Not even in concept yet.
Okay.
So, there are ballot projects yet to come that...
Okay. That's... Then all of this is a valid concern for the future. I think that if you listen to what you heard up here and just... And I'm conceptually and could be on board with a baseline of some items to be done that fall within a budget. What I will not go on is saying, y'all are... What I will not go on is saying, y'all approve your annual budget, giddy up, have a nice day, we'll talk to you in a year from now. I'm not on board with that. What I can be on board with is, there are basic items in here, and I won't go through every item, but there are line items in here that are typical standard administrative things that y'all are gonna do on a regular basis. Number two, there are things that, there, there's some BRC items that for, that you're gonna administer and manage. Those are things I don't think we will have a big problem with, if it falls within the base parameters. But, you know, we need to, you're hearing what we're saying, and I, and I, I don't think that the proposal and package, and of course, I'm looking at the proposed bylaws that were, that were presented, and I want to see a product. And this is not a product that I'm comfortable with.
Ms. Farmer?
If, if your request is for the purpose of cutting out a lot of the red tape and extra steps, from a, a finance industry, I have to say that that red tape keeps us in compliance, and keeps us out of the courts. So, I, I'm not in favor of cutting out red tape that could possibly fall out of compliance with the way the bylaws and the funds were set up. A lot of times, we get to doing our job, and we fail to read what we can and cannot do, and what's state law, and sometimes it's a little late. We, we think maybe a big golf tournament is a great thing to do for all of the people that we've given COSA DC money to. And, and I'm here to tell you, that's not in the, the heart of what the taxpayers voted to spend that money on, is a golf tournament for people that got the money to begin with. That, to me, is just, it was, it didn't have anything to do with any of y'all, but was a, a huge insult. So, that's why I'm reluctant, very reluctant.
Mr. Teague, I saw two things, and, uh, one was, two, two things popped into my head as I'm listening to the discussion. One thing is, we do all need to understand that whatever we do is not really about the people that are sitting in this room, right?
Right.
You know, I understand that your term's up in February, and that you wouldn't mind letting someone else take a turn, and, and I'm not going to be here after May. And so one of the things we need to be clear on is that we don't want to make a decision today that's based on, well, what would be good for this group of people to administer or take care of, right? It's gotta be something that has, has some foresight involved in it. Second thing I want to do is make sure I reiterate from the discussion the, the other day, that one of the things that's important to me about this process is that it's collaborative. So I don't want to give you the ability to go do your own thing, because I don't think that's really healthy. I think in a city, in this city, in all cities of any size, but if you're not careful, you start running down a bunch of individual paths, and then what you realize is, you're using taxpayer money to do something with the left hand that the right hand already did. So, for instance, you know, as an economic development policy, what, what do we want to do with rail? Well, maybe that decision's already been made by the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And, and so if that decision's already been made by another entity, then, then there ought to be the ability to, to have people involved that are involved in those other organizations to let you know before you're off doing something that's already been done, or, or things of that nature. So the collaborative nature of things requires that we want to work together, not independently. But, so I see this more procedurally, which frankly, I think is what you're now asking for, more procedural things. But recognize, I don't think you could get the votes up here to give you $1.4 million of future actions, and so now you can go find something to spend the money on. And I don't think you could get the support up here for just reviewing your budget, and then saying, go forth and, and do good works, or that kind of thing. But I do think, maybe there's some ability to, to start trying to fight through, and I don't think it's today. I think it's a, a more deliberative process led by your staff, and, and maybe a few of you, and Mr. Valenzuela, and maybe a few of us. But, but toward, what, what parts of this could we set up for you to have constraints and guidelines, and let you, let you move forward with some of those things on a project management basis? I hear Mr. Hirschfeld saying he, he, if he could figure that out, and get away from some of the real problems he sees, that he might be supportive of that. I see Mr. Alexander saying he might be supportive of that. I could be supportive of that, the, the idea that, here's the budget, here are the, here are the processes, you don't have to bring things back each time. I, I, I like the idea that the staff reaches a point on that, on some of these things that come, come through to us again and again, because what we end up doing is arguing again about whether or not we should have done it in the first place. And hell, that's done. We, you know, we did it. So now, we need to let people go, go make it happen. But I don't think the, the, you know, the overarching, we need more autonomy, I don't think that's gonna work. We need project management authority. Maybe that's something we could work on, but probably not like this. Anyway, that's what I think I'm hearing and feeling. What are you, what's further feedback from?
After the meeting, you know, the other day, I, I think everybody come to a conclusion that the autonomy of us not controlling everything, we, we realize that, we were just wanting to maybe, as long as the project's in budget. But I would like to hear from other board members of my board, and let them spread their thoughts-
That's, that's what I was gonna suggest.
So we'll just start with Pedro, I guess, if he has anything.
Well, on our behalf, or at least on my behalf, what I would like to see is not a compromise of events here. You know, I think what y'all have in front of you, and what Mr. Kendall had in front of you, was not the finished product of what we intended at our last meeting, which is, we want to be sure that we have a streamlined process that's, that allows us some flexibility to be able to administer some of those faces in those projects, without necessarily having to come back to you all the time. You know, eliminate some of those things. But also give you the ability to oversee the projects and be in line with, with what your ideals are, and what the people that you represent are. That's one. Two, I think, and from the short amount of time that I've been on this board, which was October, I believe, what I've noticed is that there isn't enough communication between this board and city council, and that's something that I spoke to Johnny about. And I think it might be a good idea to consider perhaps having more frequent joint meetings of some sort between council and, and our board, and not necessarily have to go through staff to relay those sort of messages, because I think that's where a lot of the, a lot of that miscommunication takes place. That could help resolve some of the issues with, where are projects going? How are they taking place? I'm not sure how each one of you individually meets with your board member, or how often you do, but I know for a fact that I've spoken to Johnny, and I've told him, Johnny, we need to meet more often, because that way, I can update you on what's going on, so that nothing blindsides you guys, as far as what's coming down the road. And we have a clear direction, as far as what your, people that you're representing want you to do. So there, there's just gotta be more communication between city council and this board, and there's gotta be a little bit of, of work towards some sort of, of plan, and flexibility, and strategic planning at the end of the year. Whether that means having joint meetings, you know, once every half-year, you know, I think that would be a good idea. And then individually, meet with your own individual council member on a regular basis, once a week, at least once a month, I think would be appropriate. But that's just my personal opinion, from the short amount of time that I've been on this board.
Mr. Moria?
Okay. There, there were several points, very good points brought up by council members, and I appreciate them, to specifically speak to Mr. Alexander's point about carte blanche on specific projects, and not, our board not getting involved in contingencies that were unexpected, that could lead to expenditures that were possibly perceived as frivolous. From what I've seen of the contracting we have done, each one is set up to basically pay the bills to get the task done, that were the marching orders that were approved by the city council. And in each one, there is a contractors' and architects' contingency funds, specifically for contingencies, not extras. And so long as we march to those orders, I see no problem with the oversight you would like to see, Mr. Alexander. That is already built into the system. Repeatedly, we're hearing the autonomy brought up, and I think we have put that to bed. Autonomy is not what we're looking for in this joint meeting. But we are looking to streamline the process. So I come back to Ms. Farmer's comments, that when this was all set up and the bylaws were written, it's my understanding of the history of the COSA DC, that there were several decisions made, because this was virgin territory, that we would use the city purchasing department, which was allowed, but not required. And in doing so, there were some additional checks and balances in bid processes, in contracting, that the COSA DC, by law, is not obligated to, if I understand correctly. But we have opted to participate in, because it kept the accounting under one roof, and we could use the city as the contractor to do that. We don't have to stick with that. So we are not asking that the bylaws be something that, shall we say, are constitutional, and we take that as a fundamental foundation that cannot be changed. But the board, the, the corporation has evolved to the point that we need to consider the shortcuts that were taken years ago, and see how we can streamline, and see how we can get bills paid in a timely fashion. I personally take a budget approval as marching orders to go and execute certain line items. When we look at $1.4 million for future projects, future projects in and of itself, by definition, would be things that are unknown. I doubt very seriously that this board, or any other future board of the COSA DC, would randomly go and spend that future money, without consulting the, the council and getting project approval. But once a project is approved, does that, or does that not mean that we have the preapproval to go forth and spend the money that you've authorized? You have retained the, the approval authority required by law, in my perspective. You've authorized the project to go on and get done. Each of us board members are appointed by a member of the council. Granted, my councilman just resigned, but I still sit on the board. I still sit on the board as an involuntary participant of sorts. When I was approached to serve, I wasn't seeking to be put on this board. I was identified as someone who would be a good steward of the taxpayers' money. And I trust that this council, each one of you as members, trusts your appointee to do that. And as such, you could also fire any one of us, should we not carry out the plans as you wanted us to. In that, you still retain ultimate control of this board. Our meetings are public, our meetings are aired, and just like any other member of our community, we'd love for you to come and, and sit in on them, step up and speak when, when necessary. So I suppose part of what we're asking for is your affirmation of trust. Are we the good stewards that you want us to be? If you've given us marching orders and approved a project, can we simply go on with it? If you've approved our budget that says, we're gonna pay certain utility bills, we're gonna pay interns, do we need to come to you and get each line item approved? But essentially, the-
Let's not go over the hyperbole of your microphone.
I appreciate that.
If you're, if you're going to say something happens, then, then let's be sure it really does happen, okay?
Uh, I think I've pretty well said what I need to say.
Okay.
And thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Mr. Brooks?
Well, I apologize for what got into your hands on the agenda, 'cause I think it was my understanding that was what I had in my hands, was what you guys had in your hands. And that was simply to talk about streamlining project management processes. So I'm sorry if that was a misfire. So when Kendall said, this is what I'm reading, my stomach got tightened up, 'cause I thought, where did that come from? But, so anyway, Ms. Farmer, that's not what this is about. It's simply about, in my opinion, getting rid of redundancies. But in regards to projects that are already approved, and if a project is a million dollars, we'll spend the million dollars the way it's written in the contract, and not a dollar more. If it's a dollar more, or if it's gonna go over, we'll bring it back. And so that's where I would like to go with this. And then, thirdly, we do, as the mayor said, we do need to set this up for how it works when we're not here in the future, because that's very important. Because it's very easy to sit here and say, this is the way I think we ought to do it, 'cause I think we ought to do it. And so, we, while I do think we need to do some discussion on streamlining, I do think it's more important to make sure that that policy is great three years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tinkersley?
I'm not gonna beat a dead horse around here. I agree with what Randy had to say, you know, that what you guys got, and what we anticipated to have presented to you are two different things. You know, I'm, I'm all for the streamline, you know, making this easier on us, easier on you guys, and that's it. Because I agree with what Kendall said, y'all are the elected bodies, y'all the ones we've got to answer to, and we're appointed. And so I definitely agree that you guys need to be involved every step of the way. But I think, you know, just making things easier on us, making things easier on you guys is what we're after here, not autonomy. No, don't, don't have any use for that.
Okay. Mr. Cornell?
Well, I think that the use of the word autonomy should be avoided. I think originally, what we had sought was to put forth a budget, an annual budget, that contained certain activities and projects, seek council's approval, and then thereby have the authority to move forward on projects. Obviously, if we're budgeting conservatively, we'll have an unreserved fund balance for future projects. But unless a project is, you know, specifically contained within the budget, we're not, we're not, we're not seeking approval on future projects. We're seeking approval for the projects in, in the approved budget. So it's a streamlining process. And, and just keep in mind, I mean, I think we're very fortunate to be able to use the, the services of Finance Director and Assistant City Manager, Michael Dane. So, our budget process is, is controlled, and it's conservative, and we want to make sure we have the money to meet our current and future obligations. So, anyway, I think we'll, we'll avoid the, the use of the word autonomy, and say, you know, budget-approved projects in the future.
Okay. Well, I, I wanna see if council, how council feels about a couple of things real quick. So let me bring some, some, well, again, I don't think we get to real answers, but we do get to some direction here, if we can get this right. But what I would like to see us do, you know, on the Metropolitan Planning Organization, what happens is, you, you would have these budget items, the cattle barn, the airport process, the, okay? The, those meetings are roughly six times a year, or more often than that. But every time there's a meeting, the Texas Department of Transportation engineer will step up and say, this contract has been let, this is how many days it's been in operation, this is when it's supposed to be completed, this is how much money is authorized, this is how much we have spent, and here, you know, here's how this project is going, next, next project. And that's the way I see us having some oversight, while giving them the flexibility to run a project. So it would be also very much like what we do with the CVB, or what we do with some of the other entities that come in quarterly. Downtown San Angelo gets money from us, and then does some things. But they come and say, here's what we're doing, here's how things are going, on, on roughly a quarterly basis. What I'm wanting to see is somehow that, that staff takes us toward a relationship with the development corporation, very consistent with some of those other relationships. So that we don't take a one-time vote annually, and then you're off on your own. I don't think that works for the taxpayer, I don't think it works for our oversight, and, and I don't think it's very healthy, anyway. I think you're a more collaborative board and body than that, and we want you to be collaborative. You have other entities that are also in economic development, so we need that interaction. But I would like to see us try to move forward toward something that says, you know, they've got a project- got a project, it's got a budget, let them run it, but let them come to, before council, just like those other entities, and say, "Here's the budgeted amount. Here's what we've spent so far. Here's what we foresee." You would then, Mr. Alexander, see things coming, and it would be with the guidelines that you were describing and so...
I don't have my quarterlies.
And they would do that basically quarterly, in my mind. And they'd just, you know, Mr. Sneeman, and then at least their board chairman or one or two board members, somebody would come in and be here for some interaction and discussion. But that's where I'd like to see us send this thing, is where you do get some of the streamlining and you do get some of the authority to run some projects with a reporting mechanism and an ability to be called to account. "Hey, what doesn't look good. Looks like you're going to have a problem. What are you doing about this?" Or those kinds of things. So that's my own desire to see how to move this forward. I've got Ms. Farmer first and Mr. Silva's next. Ms. Farmer?
Just clarification. I thought I heard and understood for streamlining purposes, you do not want to do what the city is required to do as far as the bidding process and stuff like that. Is that what I heard?
I think we wanted a little leniency. I mean, we've had some problems with the bidding process and the cattle barn being one of them. We almost didn't get a project complete because, I mean, I know we're going to have to go with the guidelines of the city because it is city money.
In some instances. I mean, for example, for professional services, like if we wanted to hire an architect, we don't have an obligation to put out a request for qualifications. We could just hire the architect to design the project that we have budgeted. And so, I mean, Lysia could probably speak more articulately and clearly to where we are required to go through the public purchase processes and where we're not.
Well, we've got a...
There are some construction techniques and contracting techniques that are out in the industry that are easier and that are better. Design builds are a big thing these days. And, you know, I believe by our purchasing methodology and our laws, we're not allowed to do that. Roger Banks isn't here, so I don't know, but I would presume that that's probably not an acceptable answer, correct?
You're right. Some of the techniques we are not, are not available to us or we are constrained.
Correct. But it would be available to them is really the point of where they're going on that.
Okay. You know, I don't have a problem with streamlining, as Mayor pointed out. I don't have a problem with that, except the requirements, the way that the city is required to do in the bid process and the accounting. I really prefer to see that method followed, simply because of favoritisms, et cetera and so forth, out there. They've done previous jobs. Plus, this group doesn't have access to information where a contractor, an architect firm or whatever has, we're not able to use because of letters of complaint or whatever in the files.
Yeah. Just kind of back to the left-hand and right-hand issues.
Yeah.
But, okay, but so again, I think just like we would in another contract with some of the other entities we interact with, the Downtown San Angelo, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, some of those others, I think we should get that covered via what staff puts in the, in this process. And I do think ultimately we would have to approve that, but I'm trying to see if we can't get staff to put something together we can approve that lets them move forward on their projects.
I think a compromise could be reached.
And we don't want to ask for anything that doesn't meet state law. I mean, that's not the intent of this board at all.
I think we've heard you clearly, and I think we're directing Mr. Valenzuela to work with you and see what we can't do to help you get through some things that are legitimate concerns, the BRC issue that you described, and how could that have been handled? I think it will require an update on ongoing projects on a periodic basis so that the council always feels like it knows what's going on and could ask questions. And certainly requires more collaboration than, "Once a year, here's your budget." But I think we've heard you. I think we can help you move forward and try to get you closer, at least, to where you want to be. Okay?
I just don't want to read that I approved a project that I've never heard of or was never presented in the newspaper.
Right. Now, that's the future. Mr. Silva's.
Larry, or anybody, very briefly, I know that here a while back, we approved that million-dollar cattle barn that keeps on coming up. But give me an example. I mean, we approved it, there's a million dollars, go build it. Aside from the bonding issue that happened, that it came back to us, what other loops, hoops did you have to jump through? I mean, I don't remember anything coming back.
We had to rebid it.
Okay. Aside from that, I don't remember anything coming back to it.
Well, time was, I mean, to build a million-dollar project in five months, that was the problem. We're trying to get it ready for the stock...
I believe his thought process is something like, "Look, it was bid. Instead of rebidding it and taking a chance on not getting it built, if they had autonomy or more authority or an ability to just administer that, they might have said, 'Here's the second lowest bid. Let's give it to them and let's keep moving so we can get this thing done on time.'" Where in our process, we weren't allowed to do that. We had to send it back out for rebid. But, and that's something that just has to be part of the discussion. I'm not saying, personally, I don't want to get into today, I'm not saying we should have or shouldn't have. I'm just saying that that should be part of this discussion, but it should just be clear that the council would like to see us move to a point where they can administer functions very much in line with Downtown San Angelo. We don't see everything they do. They didn't come ask us if they could buy the Roosevelt Hotel, for instance. They bought it. And, but, at a 90-day update, they said, "Here's what we're doing. Here's what we've done. Here's, you know..."
Well, let me finish by saying that this joint meeting is a good thing. I mean, we're both getting our feet wet. We may not like everything we hear, but at least we're on the same, you know, in the same room, at least talking ideas. So this is a good start, and whatever comes of it, comes of it, but...
It's a great start. The only thing is, I wish we'd had a little more collaboration before this meeting because we were over, after our meeting last week with the city manager and the mayor, we were over the autonomy part of it already and knew that that was not a reachable goal. So we were all kind of blindsided by that part of it.
Mr. Valenzuela?
I'd actually like to speak to that. What I propose also is actually scheduling a meeting to come up with those guidelines, even those performance measurements that can actually be presented on a quarterly basis. We can develop that together. I have an understanding of what the council is looking for also, kind of have an idea of what you're looking at, too. You know, we do want to be more efficient and more flexible. We do definitely understand that. So if we can get together with staff and meet with you also and come up with those guidelines, and we can come and develop something, of course, as far as performance measurements that can be presented, too. So I think that would work out really well for us, too, and I think that'll work out well for you.
And we're also going through a new staffing procedure for a new executive director and other positions, so we're trying to fulfill all that at this time. And the collaboration between us and y'all will help extend that problem.
Sir?
Real quick, I just need a clarification, okay? We keep bringing up the cattle barn as an example, and that's a very good example because we had a contract that went out and that it had to be pulled back. If you had had the procedures as you're laying out, what would you have done, knowing that, number one, could not bond it? Would you have negotiated with them on not bonding it or... Okay, because I consider that unacceptable answer.
That's unacceptable, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm in the construction business, and you've been, too. The next procedure, really, you go to the second lowest bidder and try to negotiate with them.
Okay. You see my concern on that, and that would be, you know, if you could relieve, make sure that that concern is one of those that's addressed where, "I know you're not sending a million-dollar project out to someone who can't bond it."
Right. It should have been screened to start with, though.
The problem actually starts before that, Kendall. It's, we said, "Hey, we're going to go build this million-dollar building. It's a voter-approved project." And instead of just hiring the architect that has done all the work for the Stock Show and Rodeo Association, we had to go through requests for qualifications that took, you know, six months of time to come up with the architect who's done all the work for the Stock Show and Rodeo that they like and love. And, you know, the board would have done that differently had we had the autonomy to just go out for a professional services contract, so...
The point of what I'm saying is that there, you know, to me, part of this needs to be some guidelines of what our expectations are. A project needs to be bonded, you know, above a certain level, you know, a criteria of, you know, experienced with and, you know, professionals or whatever like that. I think that would have been a great example. If the architect had been doing all the other buildings, why wouldn't we have just negotiated with him for a deal? So I'm just saying, define criteria that we can all buy off and sign off and agree and say, "If you feel, if you fit these parameters, then we're okay."
And that we all feel that when we're not here, it'd still be okay.
That's exactly right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
As far as the communication of the board between council, I would like to suggest, if it's okay, that in our workshops, when we are in budget workshops, if one of those meetings could be jointly with the COSA DC, to go over our expectations, projects, and, you know, set the pace at the workshop would be a good communication level to work with COSA.
As Taylor recommended, our strategic plan...
Well, that's what I was going to get to next. And then the other thing, I mean, that includes you. And the other thing I wanted to say, I'm very pleased with my appointee, which is Scott Tankersley. There's never been a phone call that I haven't returned or he hasn't returned or a text message because his time is limited, a young family and in business. And we try to communicate in those manners instead of a one-on-one lunch or something like that. And I have to trust that he will convey, you know, my thoughts or whatever, or whatever I can convey to Mr. Sneeman to the rest of you, because it is virtually impossible with the number of committees and other duties that fall under the council that I can communicate with each one of you individually. So I rely on just my appointee or whenever I see Mr. Cornell.
Y'all are killing me. All right, Mr. Silva's, I want to get this finished.
I have to go back to Chris, the comment you just made on the architect search, whatever. You did that because it is written where or who or why? Our rules. Is that our rules?
Our rules.
You have to go out there and...
Yes, sir.
So do I get 15 seconds?
Of course.
All right. It's real simple. I want y'all, I see, I feel you guys. I can tell you, there's a bad taste in your mouth about how this went today. It took off in a different direction. But, you know, I'm trying to get to a solution here. I think it takes a lot of, a lot of brain power to come up with creative solutions, and it's accountability versus flexibility. If the staff will just get a balance, I think we'll be all right. I think that's kind of what Mayor New said. I'm with him on that. We can, we can make something happen here. I think we can.
Mr. Teague, if we've got it at least going down the right path, I'd ask you to consider adjourning your session and allow us to adjourn a session and take a break and then start with our other business.
Okay. I think we're going down the right path. I just think the collaboration between all of us will work out all the indifferences.
Okay.
And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Barrio?
I'll second.
Mr. Brooks, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.
Thank you, sir. Having, having no further business here and based on the fact that they're adjourned, we are also adjourned from that part of our meeting, and we'll take a break now and then reconvene in our general, in our normal meeting.
Okay.
It's 11:16. I call the meeting to order. I need to make sure council and everyone understands that I just have a quorum.
I don't even know who he is.
So, okay, I just have a quorum. So bear in mind, if you have to go blow your nose, we lose a quorum, okay? So, okay. Now, having said that, let me start with the first item on the public hearing and comment agenda. This is item number 18, the presentation and discussion of the 96-gallon cart pilot program. Survey results conducted by Republic Services and any action in connection thereto. We have a presentation today by our interim operations director, Shane Kelton, and from Robert Searls, who's the municipal, easy for me to say, Municipal Services Manager for Republic Services.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My part's not going to be long, just a little background. Back last summer, y'all approved a pilot program for the 96-gallon rollout carts, and Public Services implemented that, passed out the survey, have survey results, and they want to share them with you today. And then may have a couple of questions for y'all to get y'all's directions on the back end of it. But with that, I'll turn it over to Robert Searls and let them get going with their presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, Shane. My name is Robert Searls with Republic Services, and we had about a six-month pilot program, and we hired an independent contractor to conduct the survey for us. And he's done it once before, I think in 2006 in the Bentwood area. So, anyway, with the results, he's got a few slides here to look at. It shouldn't take very long, and we'll go over those results with you guys.
Okay.
Hello, council. My name is Stephen McLaughlin with McLaughlin Advertising. As we did in 2006, we were hired once again by the local trash services company to survey the homeowners in a pilot program. Okay, there were 523 total homes in the pilot program, and we used the same methodology that we did before, which was that initially what we tried to do was get an in-person contact, and then we followed that up with mailers by anybody that we weren't able to reach in person. All of this was designed to try to maximize the number of responses we got so we could get as close to 100% feedback as we possibly could. Our first attempt, we enlisted youth groups from local churches. They included TLC Church, St. Luke United Methodist, and Harris Avenue Baptist Church. And they went door-to-door and captured as many people on the front porches as they possibly could. The design of this was to use area youth so it could be a fundraiser and something that was positive and so that people, when they were responding to the survey, could feel like they were not just helping out a trash company or the city, but could help out these young people. And, you know, the thing about trying to conduct survey information is nobody likes to be bothered, and you certainly don't like telemarketers, this sort of thing. So the one thing that you don't mind is helping a nice young kid on your front porch who's just trying to earn some money for their church. So that was our primary focus there. Now, once we gave that ample time, we followed that up with a mailer, which is a postcard, which gave them a non-invasive anonymous opportunity to express their opinions and give us their feedback there. Again, we're just trying to eliminate any obstacles to residents' ability to give their opinion and be counted. In total, we have 357 completed responses. That equals 68% of the participating households. There's some breakdowns there that show you how many we got of each thing. Our kind of consensus, number one question, number one thing we need to know was the very first question in general, "Do you like the automated trash collection system using the Republic Services 96-gallon cart?" They had a yes or no response, and then obviously they could fail to respond at all. The results are, we had 304 who replied yes they did, 44 who replied no, and seven who failed to answer at all. So, let's see, let me back up one. So that gives you an overall result of 86% who were in favor or who replied yes to that initial question. Do you like the automated trash collection system using the Republic Services 96-gallon cart? You'll see on this next page, the postcard responses were 74% in favor and 11% against. And also, where we were able on the door-to-door responses, we went back into each of your districts to see if there was any great variation from one area of town to the other, and as you'll see, they're all very positive. Included in here is a little pie graph from Councilman Alexander's area, which wasn't surveyed this time because they weren't in the pilot program, but it's held over from the last survey that we did six years ago, just to kind of give you a basis that actually there's no great fluctuation from six years ago when we did that survey as well. Further past there, you'll find information on a variety of other questions that were built in the survey, and those are more housekeeping kind of things. How often should it be done? Do people want to pay for it, that sort of thing? So there's a whole lot of different information there. But by and large, what I'm to present to you today is that you have an overwhelming majority who are in favor of the program, both via the mail and via the in-person responses and in each of your individual areas of town. Any questions I can answer for you?
You have questions for the gentleman?
I've got one.
Mr. Silva's.
What was the response on folks wanting maybe a once-a-week collection versus a two-day, I mean, a twice-a-week collection?
I don't know off the top of my head if you can directly answer that. The questions are more structured, like, is it full or is it empty and that sort of thing. Cart is easy maneuver.
It is, isn't it? I believe the cart capacity is...
Sufficient or...
There you go.
It's full when it's been picked up.
It's a fairly large number, though, that says they strongly disagree.
Okay.
I'll go from memory.
So, so they disagree with... See, on the second collection day, your cart is usually full, is 138, half-full is 142, 32 almost empty. Is that question, is it the one you're asking me about?
Go to the other question that says, uh...
Number eight, I believe.
I believe that the cart capacity is sufficient for once-a-week collection to minimize truck traffic in my neighborhood.
There you go.
One being the highest, five being the lowest. Am I, am I correct on that scale, right?
That's it.
It was 114 on the high and 117 on the low.
It's one of the few questions...
127, strongly disagree.
127, sorry. One of the few questions you have that has a fairly polar set of answers. Everything else tends to congregate toward one end or, or of the, of the deal. But this one, you got strongly agree and strongly disagree, both as fairly large numbers.
But we'll clarify this, that really the issue that they're disagreeing with is whether it's enough to do it once a week, not whether it's to do it at all.
Agreed. No, I agree with you. Yeah.
That's what I wanted to bring out. Yeah, exactly.
Anything else?
Well, I, I'll just say that if you were to throw in, and I've done this on the San Angelo connection page, you throw in recycling and say, we'll pick up once-a-week trash, once recycling. And it was very heavily in favor of once-a-week trash pickup, if you'll do once-a-week recycling as well. So, you'd have to ask more questions. What that says is, we have to ask more questions. It means this is not a decisive answer, that they wouldn't go for once a week. They would if you put recycling in, I think.
To me, the survey and reading each district and their responses, my district had the most responses, you know, favorable yes. I mean, they liked it. And I've, I've talked to a lot of the constituents in my neighborhood, especially this winter. The wind has been much greater than it normally has. And they've seen where my trash can is not blowing down the alley like all of theirs are. And the lid is not popping up like theirs are, and there's trash to pick up. They're very pleased and want to know when we're going to get started with these cans.
Okay. Let's, we, we have your slides. Let's see if there's anything else besides discussion of this that needs to be done at this time, so.
Mayor New, members of the council, I usually have with me my, my management team, but I just wanted to, to recognize some other folks here that do the real work at Republic, and that's our operations team. Randall and Larry are back here with us. And, and they're the guys that take care of any issues that may come up. And I was talking to them this morning, and collectively, they have about 50 years of experience, even though they don't look that old. And also, there's a, there's a third member that's out. He couldn't get away, Bruce, and he, he has 35 years with the company. So, based on our long history, since 1977 here in San Angelo, taking care of getting the trash off the ground and burying it at the landfill. With that, and the positive results of the survey, we are ready to negotiate with the city to incorporate automation in a, in an agreement that's, that can be done through a solid waste committee, that can be set up through a couple of council members and Mr. Valenzuela's, some, some of his staff. So that's, that's commonly done, so that everybody knows what, what is going into the negotiation process. But we're ready to negotiate.
Okay. Thank you very much. It seems like to me that our, our natural next steps are some discussion with Mr. Valenzuela about where we've been over time and, and how we got here. And then maybe start discussing then what we want to do on either renewal of a contract and so forth, and let that process take its normal course. But what is, what is it?
In looking at, you know, the high numbers are favorable for the system. And, you know, as a city, we've grown, and we need to process, and we need to update. And I can tell you that every negative call that I received during this trial period was met and turned into a positive, once they understood. And I can honestly say that Republic took care of every single call that I received. And I'm most appreciative. And I would like to see Mr. Valenzuela move forward and discuss and negotiate with you.
Tell me, I want you to understand something really quickly, though. When is the contract up for, for the provider and the landfill?
The current contract expires July of 2014.
Okay. And so what I'm saying is, you probably want to, want to be covering this as one set of, one basket.
Correct.
Okay?
Right.
So you're probably not wanting to implement these 96-gallon containers as an action, and then turn around and do something.
Right.
So, I'm looking at it and thinking that it's so close that this is probably all one, one basket.
Yep.
Okay? And so I think what I'm saying is, it's, it's something to, to describe for Mr. Valenzuela in some different discussions, in individual discussions, what your history is, what you know about it, and let him start down the path of, of creating something to bring before council that says, here's what we're thinking, and here's how we're wanting to move forward. That kind of thing. Sir?
I, I would say that, I mean, we need to be...
We need to be answering phones or turning them off.
You know, really what we're, really the discussion is not necessarily about, to me, these...
Just, is that an abandoned ship deal?
No quorum.
We can't have a quorum.
Somebody sneezed.
So we can just talk about if that's abandoned ship or not?
Yes.
I think it was abandoned ship.
Yeah.
I hope that's not a sign.
Okay, Mr. Kelton, what was that joke you were going to tell us?
Uh, no, I'm not going to...
Okay, here we go.
Okay. All right. I, I guess the issue that really is, is not necessarily whether we like the, the trash containers or not. I mean, because I, I think it's overwhelming, yes. The real question is whether, whether we're going to, because it is so close to termination to talk about, are we going to talk about essentially a brand-new renewal of this contract? Because they're not going to bring in all the equipment, they're not going to spend the money on all the, all the buckets and everything like that for a one-year period.
Right.
That is a fair statement. I, I truly believe. I don't think they would. I wouldn't if I was in their shoes. So, that, that's the real question that's got to be coming, coming about. And, and I'll say, and I've said this before, that, that, you know, these 96-gallon buckets are not what make the difference in our trash collection. I mean, they're, they are a commodity. They are one item, they're one piece. But it's beyond that. It's the landfill, it's, you know, the roll-offs, it's, you know, the commercial, it's the, you know, it's the entire package that we have to be looking at. And so, you know, I just want, I'm just kind of throwing that out.
The key, a key element being the life of the landfill, and whether or not some changes in how we do things may be related to recycling would extend the life of the landfill.
Absolutely.
That's why I'm saying, there's really a big...
But we need to move forward with their talks with Mr. Valenzuela.
Absolutely. Sure.
To get it back to council for approval or non-approval of a new contract. But we need to move forward with those talks with Republic and Mr. Valenzuela.
But there's, there's one stipulation, though. And the question is, is Republic willing to terminate the current contract at agreed-upon time, to where we know where the cutoff is? So when we're, we're negotiating, we, other vendors have an equal shot. You know what I'm saying?
But it already, it's June of 14.
June of 14. But if we're going to do this now, then we need to terminate our contract at a, at a predefined point to where we're going to last again, and we're going to start anew.
Take some time.
2014.
Take some time. You've got a landfill with only 17 years of useful life. You guys need to, to take some time. You're going to have some new council members in May? You're going to...
Oh, if we're going to respect the 2014, June 2014 date.
I would, I would start him down a path, but I would not be in such a hurry.
You have to go through a fair practices methodology, and, and other vendors need a shot at this as well.
Take some time.
And so what I'm hearing is, we can renegotiate, let's just get this thing going and rolling. And I, we can't do that.
No. And it's not even that.
Discussions.
Yes. I think, I'm with you, Ms. Farmer, that if, if you guys are willing to bring us into the meat of what you want to offer, I'm all for it. I want to hear, and, and I want to be able to tweak and not tweak, just any details. I'm interested in what you've got, you've got, you know, on the table.
Yeah, we're, like I said, we're willing to enter into negotiations with a solid waste committee. They could include a couple of council members and some staff to negotiate what, what options, you know, we can negotiate the landfill piece, coupled with the automation, coupled with, you know, the...
What I'm describing to you is, I'm saying, let's not go quite that far, that fast. Let's not appoint a committee and move, what I'm saying is, let's make sure that you have some time in the next 60 days or so to be informing Mr. Valenzuela.
Yes.
What you know, what you've been through on, on solid waste, what you know about the landfill, what your thoughts are about recycling, what your, those kinds of things. Then let a process like this start forward. And you'll still have a year to 15 months to get the thing completed. But I don't, I, you know, and I think that's fairly consistent with what you're describing.
I envision a six-month period is what it would take. And so this is premature to say some of the things we're saying. So that's why I stopped Johnson. If, if we can do this in a six-month period, I bet you we could. But we have to make it available forever.
And in a six-month period, it would really be, it would be a pretty rough process if you try to get a bunch of stuff done, then have an election, then have a bunch of new people making the final votes. And so I just find myself saying, let's, let's get started down a path, but let's not be in such a hurry that, that we don't let some of the processes take place.
Well, call it what you may. I mean, if it's a, it's committee or not, I think, again, the talks, the ideas that we're feeding between us and, and Republic, between Daniel Valenzuela and Republic is something that I think it's, I'm certainly willing to, to jump into.
Well, basically, what I'm saying, Mr. Silva, is I want to start with him just talking with you. He'll, then we'll decide at a future date to put a committee together and start talking with vendors. Okay? But I'm wanting first for it just to be, let's be clear that he really understands the Simmons process on gas, that he clearly understands the life of the landfill. Let's be, you know, that's where I'm wanting to be. I'm wanting to just say, let's, let's be sure everybody is up to speed inside our staff. Then let's go out into the vendor community and start discussions with the vendor community. So that's what I'm saying.
How long is a normal contract? 10 years?
For, for trash.
Trash, 10 years?
Ten-ish.
Yeah. We had 10 initially, and then five-year renewals.
I understand. So, so what, the mayor's right. I mean, what we're talking about is, this is not something we, boom, let's do it right now, because this affects at least 10 years. You guys have been here 30 years, 30 years plus. And, you know, and so, you know, and, and I don't think any of us up here are saying, we want you gone and all that.
No.
But we want the process to take a very clear, clear, solid step forward. And, and I personally, and I've said this before, that I want to respect, because you have been here for 30 years. You deserve some respect for being here for 30 years. And the service that, that, that Trash Away and Duncan, and then now Republic has supplied the city, I mean, you deserve some respect for that. But with that said, it's 30 years later, and we do need to see, you know, really, what's the next 30 years going to hold for us? Whether it's 10 years, or 20, or 30, so.
And that's exactly what, you know, what I was talking about. And, and we don't have to form a committee. I mean, we can deal directly with Mr. Valenzuela's team. But I was just wanting to, while we have the momentum going, we can enter into negotiations to come up with a proposal to put forth to the council in February or March to, it's agreeable to Republic and city staff, so that we can, you know, maybe act on it. Because it's, it's one thing, we can, we can talk about the landfill, the life of the landfill. We can talk about all those concerns you're mentioning. But we can go ahead and start doing that through negotiations now.
But see, I don't agree with you, Mr. Searls. And the reason I don't is because I, I think the experience at the landfill needs to be discussed clearly and heavily. And, and so, for instance, right now, if I take a load of trash down there, I go down into the dump with everybody else, including your trucks. And so there are some things about that experience versus the experience at other landfills that I'm familiar with, that I want to be part of a, of a long-term discussion. So I don't think this is about 96-gallon cases. I think this is about, what is it, what does recycling look like in San Angelo, Texas, and the surrounding area? Does it include other communities that you serve? And is there something we can do to make this a regional hub for pulling recycling facilities into this community, or, or supporting one in another community in the area, but so that recycling might can come to, come to pass in this organ, in, in this city? So there's a, in my mind, this is a fairly involved discussion, not, not about, you know, okay, why don't, are we going to have the landfill, or are we going to sell it to you? Are you going to run the landfill for us, or are we going? I don't see that as what we're talking about. I see what we're talking about is, what do we want waste management to be over the next 10 or 20 years in San Angelo and the surrounding area, as it relates to recycling, as it relates to the landfill, and as it relates to pickup? So, I mean, I don't want us to be in a hurry. I want us to get it right. And, and that's why I'm...
And who's going to take us there?
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mayor Reed Donaldson, and I'm with Republic Services. I grew up here. But that's where we are. And I'm sorry about, it probably sounds like a little bit of a miscommunication. But we just finished the pilot program on the carts.
Right.
So, we are now at that point. And, and I actually, I remember a meeting before, before the change to Mr. Valenzuela, when we talked about the landfill. And one of the, you know, because I'm over all of North Texas and West Texas, I have, we have a lot of landfills. And part of this discussion will include a convenience station at the landfill. It's going to include some form of recycle program in the future. One thing we have to get out here is a single-stream type facility to take those recyclables.
And it'll have to be, it probably has to be a regional facility.
It'll be a comprehensive program. Yeah. And, and it's just one of those things where it's a stair-step process, and you have to start somewhere. And, and this happens all over the state, happens all over the nation. So that's, that's exactly what it's going to be.
I appreciate it. That's the conversation we want to have. I just don't think it will conclude February and March, for instance. I think it's going to start, and we go down a path. And, and I, I want to explain to, you know, I want council members to have the opportunity to, to tell Mr. Valenzuela what they know, what they've learned, those kinds of things, and then let the process move forward. And then, you know, I'm mindful that I'm not running for reelection. I leave in May. I, I, you know, I don't know that a decision will be made before I leave. And if it does, it will surprise me. So...
Well, but also, I'd like to disclose that many of us, maybe all of us, have been thinking about this, talking about this, meeting with different companies and representatives. We toured plants. So we've been doing this for two years. We're pretty, we're pretty informed about what's going on. And so, when this came to us, I looked at this and said, we could make a decision in under six months. And that's before the contract's out.
But the newest piece to the puzzle is Mr. Valenzuela.
Right.
That's why I don't want to...
That's right. And that makes sense. And I think this is to be clear on both sides here. And I think we're getting on the same page pretty quick here.
Okay. Anyway, I look forward to discussing with you some of the...
Talks have got to begin, in order to get to where we're going.
Again, and what we're trying to do here is, there's the, Mr. Hirschfield said it earlier, there's a huge investment. Not only huge investment we already have. What's different about trash business, it's hard for, I have 225 of these contracts that I deal with. And I deal with councils at every level. I think sometimes people say, or think in their mind that doing a trash contract's like buying paint. It's not. There's only a few of us that do it. We buy, we spend 250,000-plus for our trucks. Every one of those trash cans is 50 bucks. So, and if you went and bought it at Home Depot, you'd pay 85. So, we bought 4 million trash cans. I mean, it's a big deal. So, the reason why we get to this point is we're now at a point that we need some direction from you guys to look at this investment, and then look at where we're going to put the future investment. Because we have a big future investment as well.
His, his point.
Yes. And, and so, we're just looking for you guys today to give us some direction, say, hey, get with, let's get going. You guys give us something. And then let's say we get five months down the line, and you look at it and you go, hey, we don't like this, we want to go this way, or we do like this, then tell us. But just, we're just looking for a direction.
Yeah, that's very fair. I just want to make sure I put a timeframe on it, though, that's not, we're not going to get to an answer on what to do and extend a contract and all that.
That's right.
Because we really, in my mind, we have extended before. But right now, we're at a, at a point where because of the gas issue, because of the life of the landfill, because of just the fact that there really isn't, or how do we want to handle recycling? I mean, there's recycling being done now. There's a private company going around picking up products and taking it and so forth. So, I mean, there's, there, but we need to have the, the whole discussion, decide where we want to go, and then, and then go there, and, and get involved with you guys.
And, and I just, again, if we stopped with the survey, the reason why we asked for this is because if we stopped with the survey, then that doesn't give us truly the direction you want. And again, it's not about the carts. It's a lot bigger issue than that. But we're just looking for direction from you guys.
Super deal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes, sir.
And you may have been going there, but, so then now we're, we have at our, in our lap, the, this idea of the 96-gallon cart. Does, I know it benefits... Does, I know it benefits us, it certainly benefits me. I am very much a proponent of these carts. But does it benefit Republic? I don't know. Do they move on? Do we move on, or?
Well, they, okay.
Move on.
I'm talking about with the idea, with the ninety-six gallon cart.
Let's talk about the specificity of the area that has a cart currently. Do you want to continue operating those ninety-six gallon carts while these other discussions are taking place? Or do you want to revert back to one system all over town? What are your thoughts on that?
No, we really want to, we believe this is a future. I mean, we truly wouldn't have gone to this much hassle to do this and bring a truck in.
So, hold this in place, get the discussions done.
Now, now, I will tell you, this is like anything else. You sit on it very long and all of a sudden, you're going to have, I mean, I had a person catching me at the end of the council chambers back there during the little breaks saying, "When do I get my cart?"
When do I get mine? Yeah.
So, that's the other side to that.
Thank you. Okay. But so, I think you see, we, we hold on to the status quo, we start the process, but get to an answer for the landfill, the, the landfill's future, recycling's future, trash hauling future, and, and get the whole thing done as a package.
There's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of areas need to be reviewed also, so, absolutely.
Okay. I'm going to move us then from item number eighteen, treat that as a discussion item, and go to nineteen. This is the consideration of adopting the two-thousand-and-twelve San Angelo Cultural District Planning Study and any action related thereto. Presentation today is by our Parks and Recreation Director Carl White and Howard Taylor, who's the Director of the Museum of Fine Arts. Bye, y'all, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Carl White here, Parks and Recreation Director. I, as well as other staff members, Fort Concho Site Manager Bob Blueheart, Assistant City Manager Rick Wise, as, as well as Tom Early with the San Angelo Health Foundation and folks with the Ernst and Dorothy Barrow Foundation have worked together to develop this study. And our staff does recommend adoption of this study. And I'll introduce Howard Taylor next, who has a presentation which does have, I believe, a slideshow with about, a nine-minute slideshow with some audio.
I'm getting coaching that's productive coaching. Even though it was a discussion item, I, I dropped the ball by not allowing the public to weigh in, just to inform us. And so, I want to ask you guys to let me re-enter item number eighteen long enough to ask, is there anyone in the chamber or in the, in here that would like to talk about that process that we were just going through with the pickup and the recycling and all that? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, I'm sorry for that. I dropped the ball there. And now, let's get back on item number nineteen and let Mr. Taylor take over on the San Angelo Cultural District Planning Study.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation. I'll just quickly remind you that in two-thousand-and-nine, the Art Museum applied for the opportunity to lead the creation of a cultural district in San Angelo. We did that with city council's approval and a resolution. And we've been working at it ever since. Last year, we felt that it would make sense to undertake a planning study with some outside input. And indeed, we put together a terrific team led by Art Wolf and Mimi Quintanilla, who are with us today, and they're back here. And they'll come up after a very short PowerPoint we'd like to present. And also, I'd like to introduce Daniel Wilde. I think others were mentioned. Tom Early is here today. But Daniel Wilde heads up what I consider to be an extraordinary resource that most of us are not familiar with. But they partnered with the city, the Art Museum, and the Health Foundation to create this study. And Daniel's over here. And Daniel, if you just wave your hand so everyone knows who you are. And then I'd like to go ahead with this PowerPoint. It's very brief. I believe you all received a copy of the study. The one thing I would say about this is that this is kind of the tip of the iceberg. And there's an appendix in here that has an enormous amount of supporting documentation that's available online. And now, we'll try to see if we can make this work and hopefully.
In two-thousand-and-nine, the San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts was selected to lead the creation of a cultural district in San Angelo. This was granted by the State of Texas and was the result of a highly competitive process supported by the City of San Angelo. The designation was for an area from the south bank of the Concho River, south to Washington Street, and from South Chadburn east to South Oaks, including the site of Fort Concho. At the request of the Health Foundation, the district was expanded to the Bryant Freeway. The Health Foundation has acquired substantial land along the river and wishes to participate in the development of this district. This resulted in a two-hundred-acre district, which is the largest in the state. The grant reviewers were amazed at the vast number of historic and cultural sites in the district, unmatched anywhere else in the state. The San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts has gained international recognition for its exhibitions and programs. SAMFO received the nation's highest museum award in a ceremony at the White House in two-thousand-and-four. The district includes our Historic Depot, which is magnificently preserved and contains a railroad museum. The adjacent railroad warehouse is now operated as a senior citizen center. The senior citizen center has been so successful that an annex has been created in an adjacent Our visitor's center is one of the most attractive and best-located in Texas. The WPA-era municipal swimming pool has been recently renovated and has become an exciting venue for the children in our community. The River Stage is a beautiful outdoor amphitheater on the river that will seat up to eight-thousand The Paseo de Santa Angela was created after the Rudat study of twenty years ago. It has become a beautiful pathway through the heart of the cultural district, beginning with the Celebration Bridge on the north side of the river. The Paseo continues into a large, open area that was designed for festivals. There are two handsome pavilion buildings on the Paseo that shelter exhibitors and allow for dances and programs. Old Town is a street comprised of historic buildings, which now houses the Upper Colorado River Authority and a number of galleries and shops. The Farmer's Market is a large covered area adjacent to Fort Concho, where local produce is sold on the weekends. Located adjacent to the grounds of Fort Concho is the State Office Building. There are a number of agencies and offices, such as the MHMR Center, throughout the district. The district also is comprised of residential areas, where many of the houses have been lovingly cared for or restored recently. In two-thousand-and-ten, the Art Museum, the City of San Angelo, the Health Foundation, and the Barrow Foundation commissioned a team of consultants to help assess the possibilities for our cultural district. The team was led by Art Wolf, an internationally recognized expert in preservation and community development, and his partner, Mimi Quintanilla, who is a noted educator and who serves on many community boards, such as the San Antonio River Authority. They were joined by Gary Smith, President of the Dallas Heritage Village at Old City Park. And also by Calvin Smith, the Executive Director of the Western Heritage Museum Complex in Hobbs, New Mexico. Philip Collins is the Executive Director of the International Memecine Foundation, headquartered in Dallas. And he has served as the curator of the African-American Museum in Dallas. Douglas Harmon has served as the City Manager of Alexandria, Virginia, and also of Fort Worth, Texas. For seventeen years, he headed the Fort Worth Convention and Visitors Bureau and is recognized as one of the leading visionaries in the field of community marketing. This dynamic team made an intensive site visit to San Angelo, March fourth through seventh, two-thousand-and-twelve, and they met with more than fifty institutional, government, and neighborhood stakeholders. The team made site visits throughout the community, visiting with individuals such as Tom Early, head of the San Angelo Health Foundation. They also hosted public meetings and met with members of city council and other civic leaders. The team recognized the remarkable assets that our community possesses and also saw a broader vision of how those assets could work together. They observed business and artistic efforts, such as a number of new art galleries. The consultants recognized that the district is a major center of activity, with nearly a half-million visitors annually attending activities such as Christmas at Old Fort Concho, the July third event on the River Stage, and the Art Museum's annual Eco Fair. They noted the vast range of education programs for youth, hosted by the fort, the art museum, the Upper Colorado River Authority, and other agencies in the district. The team also observed significant problems, such as the lack of visitor signage, dangerous speeding traffic on the north-south corridors, and the need to restore and enhance assets such as the Oak Street Bridge.
We have a great depot and we have a wonderful fort, but-
There is no place that tells the story of the more than twelve-thousand-year history of Native Americans. There is not a significant recognition of the African-American soldiers who were here early on. Nearly half of our population is Hispanic, and yet we do not have a Hispanic history or cultural center. Fort Concho has thousands of artifacts that could help tell this history, but they are now confined to storage. One remarkable opportunity is that the Barrow Museum, which is located in Eola, is looking at the possibility of relocating large portions of its collections to the cultural district. Their collections number in the hundreds of thousands and encompass regional heritage, including natural history, agricultural traditions, and Native American history. There are also a number of private collections related to our heritage that the owners may be willing to lend to a history center. The Art Museum has taken on some significant challenges to demonstrate to the community the possibilities that exist in the district. It acquired an entire block of buildings on South Oak Street that many felt should be demolished. This is an example of a building that was virtually abandoned and collapsing. This is what it looks like after restoration. This is an interior view of the same building. It was redeveloped jointly with the Upper Colorado River Authority. The U.C.R.A. now holds its education programs here and works jointly with the Art Museum, the city, and the San Angelo Independent School District. The streetscape in this area was also horrible. Here it is, under reconstruction. Today, this block of South Oak Street is one of the most attractive and exemplary areas in the city. The Art Museum is continuing its planning and efforts to show what can be done. The highly-successful Rudat study that was done twenty years ago is essentially a model for the current study that is being undertaken for the cultural district. The cultural district study is, however, richer and more detailed than the original Rudat plan. A recent article in the New York Times highlighted the importance of the Texas cultural districts in the state's economic development effort. The article focused on the San Angelo Cultural District as exemplary. It is our desire to move forward with thoughtful plans, excitement, and energy. We are focused on creating one of the most beautiful and intensively-used cultural districts in our state. We seek to become the shining star of Texas.
Music work, that was. I just wanted to say very quickly, one of the things that we seek to do, and we would like permission of the city council to do this, is to publish in the Standard Times a supplement that summarizes the key findings of the study and also some of the aspirations and ideas of the various entities that are involved. And I'll remind you that that was what was done originally with the Rudat study. And we think that would be, one of the things that was critical, Rudat just celebrated its twentieth anniversary. Probably you don't know this, but the American Institute of Architects referred to it as their most successful Rudat ever done. And they, in their publication, featured it recently and also did a program that apparently is available on YouTube. And so, we felt that that was really important, and I think it's in the spirit of San Angelo to share and communicate with our community. And now, if I may, I'd like to have Art Wolf and Mimi Quintanilla come up. And if you have any questions, we'd be delighted to answer them. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, and new city manager. I'm Art Wolf, and Mimi Quintanilla is here with me. We're just glad we could come and stand up here and expose ourselves to any questions you might have. You've seen the study, your pictures are in it, some of you. Please.
The geographic boundary of the cultural district is?
It's the, on the north, the Concho, on the south, Washington, on the east, Oaks, with, with the fort also, and then on the west, to the Brant Avenue. Yeah. And you can see it takes a jog there.
At the request of the Health Foundation-
It got bigger while we were doing the study, too. And I, I think it's appropriate to, to, to really point out that the city has been involved for a long time in this district, probably the largest landowner, certainly massive investments in infrastructure over the years. And, you know, what, what the study suggests is that the city will be not responsible for everything that happens in the cultural district, but that would be the enabling factor with signage, with sidewalks, with infrastructure. And then encouraging the nonprofits, private investment, and other developments, so.
With the art walks and some of the galleries that are a little further north, and then the Franklin City Hall and the Performing Arts Center, just trying to understand how may, how maybe all of it ties together or not. So, that's part of why I was asking what the physical-
Yeah. What, what we've suggested is that the city conceive of all of it as the historic city center with a distinctiveness between and within downtown, and then the cultural district on the, on the south side. So, it's, both of those are part of the historic city center. Mimi, do you want to?
Sorry to put this lower. From the standpoint of your visiting community or your, your home community that will come to these places, the distinction will not be made necessarily. The north of the river and the south, the, what is it called, across the river, really is a historic designation, but in terms of being able to use the amenities, both by the locals and anyone who visits San Angelo, I don't think that there will be that big of a distinction. You have existing amenities, you have existing organizations and, and destinations like Fort Concho and the museum and the pool. You know, we talked about Old Town. Then you've got your emerging, which is the cultural district, and you've got your North Concho River Project, and you've also got the historic district studies and the PAC, as you just mentioned. And then you've got your potential that we talked about, which are the neighborhood associations, some version of historic San Angelo, which could be a physical entity, or it could be the way that the entire area is perceived, both across the river and on the north side of the river. And then you've got the nature center, you've got your, our junior league initiatives, and all kinds of wonderful things like Contempo. And then, there are things that are needed to create this cultural district and create the perception of a sense of place. And that's the unified wayfinding, which is, there's an incredible need for that.
Right. And specifically, that's one of the reasons why I asked the question, though. Because the wayfinding, there, it's going to not just be confined to that-
Absolutely.
Let me jump in and say that the, the great discovery that we made in the study is that over ninety-five percent of what the cultural district might do is already anticipated in your long-term vision planning and indeed in your city rules and regulations. So, it, in the, at the ground level, it's not a separate thing. It, it should be able to fit right into what you're doing already.
Thanks.
Yeah. I think, if I can make one big point, the wayfinding is critical. And to already have that study done was a big help to us- And to already have that study done was a big help to us, to be able to create that sense of place and to think about it as a cohesive amenity and as a cohesive driving force for this part of the city.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer.
In your report, you mention a blighted area that brings down the district. What is your recommendation as to how to cure that?
Now, I should point out that we're not making a recommendation of how you do that, but the last few pages of the report, if you read through those carefully, we laid out a roadmap for the way that the district can organize itself and then work with the city to solve some of those problems. And, you know, if we thought this was just gonna be filed on a shelf, we would have bound it in leather for you. But it's supposed to be living and working, and, you know, in fact, we're meeting with the stakeholders this afternoon to talk about what would the next steps be for the community.
Howard, we're gonna expect like a five-year follow-up, 10-year follow-up, 20-year follow-up from you on this.
You'll get it, I promise you. I want to make one big point, and this is one reason why I thought it was especially valuable to have our team come from outside. All of you are very familiar when I showed those images, and we left out the fort, but you know the fort is absolutely remarkable. But the thing that our outside team, and Doug Harmon in particular, because I think he would carry a lot of weight in his opinion with you, as a former city manager and is head of the Fort Worth Convention and Visitors Bureau, he was the one responsible for developing the concept of the museum district in Fort Worth, also the Stockyards District, and downtown reinvestment and marketing them. And the observation he had is, I can't believe that you've got it all in one place. We have our downtown, our museum district, and the fort and related historic entities right there, and there's virtually no other community that has that, you know, aggregate of wonderful assets. But the fact is, if you come to this town, you might think that you're in a very unattractive area, that there's nothing to see or do. You'll come upon some of those assets, such as the depot, but most of what you see just doesn't give you the perception that it's something special or wonderful. And all those things are at the doorstep. When the RUDAT study was done, they said, you have all these great assets, you can't even see them. It cleared away a lot of the things that interfered with that. So we're in an evolutionary process. I think Councilwoman Farmer, your answer about the properties is, obviously, the majority of them are owned by private individuals, and we'd like to work with them and find ways to incentivize and even bring some ideas to their doorstep about what could happen. One vision we have, by the way, is an interesting one. We'd like to find a way with perhaps a couple of those structures that could be used for something called skills preservation, where you bring in people who have traditional skills that are disappearing, such as saddle making, boot making. We've even talked to Howard College about the idea of developing vocational programs. We did that at my museum in Philadelphia years ago, boat building, and people thought, well, why would anyone want to learn traditional boat building? Actually, we turned out a number of multimillionaires who are now building fabulous yachts and so forth. We have great traditions here, so we thought something like that might reinforce the historic character, add to the attractiveness. And if you've ever been to Kingsville and you see what the King Ranch has done, they have this huge operation where they sell goods and materials and things that come off the ranch, and so it's ideas like that that we're working with. And then the museum will continue with its own dynamic efforts to show what can be done. And I think the thing I would say that underlies all this is, the incredible asset that we have is Fort Concho, and we don't want to take it for granted. Some people think we've done that. You are never done doing a historic site like that, and it's one of the most unique in America. It's the second-oldest major preservation effort in America, after Williamsburg, which was done by multi-multi-millionaires. Ours was done seat-of-the-pants grassroots. We've got to continue to invest in the fort. I think it's like the energizer of that entire area.
And that's, we were glad to hear Fort Concho mentioned in your earlier discussion today, too, because that's how the city's been involved, even small capital improvement projects, incrementally building over the decades, and it's not like someone's asking for $500 million to do something. It seems to be a natural part of your city administration, the parks people. It's really well done, in our opinion.
The fort is actually what San Angelo is mostly known for outside of the immediate area. The other thing that I wanted to stress is, this is not, the cultural district is not a city project. It's a project that has many, many different feet in the water. It's private investment, it's neighborhood investment, it's city investment, but it's a lot of energy that has to come up. It has to be very organic for it to be successful, and I think that is one of the things that this very large area has going for it. There's a lot of different opportunities to strengthen the cultural district and to strengthen it as part of both sides of the river.
Okay. Mr. Silves.
Mimi, let me ask you, did you narrate this?
No, that was not my voice.
I just couldn't place it, but whoever did, they made an interesting point, and of course, this area is near and dear to my heart, you know, it's SMD III, but a point was made, and I want to ask you, Art, what would you do to expand, but the Hispanic history or lack of representation, what ideas are out there, or are there any?
What we suggested in the report is to create a concept which might be an entity, it might actually be an institution. We just called it History San Angelo to begin, and it would be inclusive, it would be broad, it would cover all the time periods, all the people, and making use of the strengths of the existing institutions, but also adding the capability to go back in time and to reconstruct the other things that went on here. So that would be the chief venue that we would see as an opportunity for you, Howard.
And let me just add this before, but I'm all about the frontier soldiers and the buffalo soldier. I love history, but when you have, you know, like it was mentioned that the population here is almost 50% Hispanic, I feel like we're being left out of the big picture. So, you know, anything to entice, anything to build that, I think would be a benefit to all of us.
And I can speak to that, given my cultural background and cultural heritage. I frequently have found myself on committees and planning sessions where it's like, how do we do this? And one of the things that I've learned over the course of my career and my involvement in these projects is not to separate out different cultural groups to tell the complete story. The way to have everyone feel that they're participating and represented is to have them represented from the very beginning of the story and not layered in or added in. It should be part of the initial interpretive plan, it should be part of the plan for the overall district. It's not that it was buffalo soldiers, or Latinos, or German settlers, or Irish settlers, or anyone else. It's tell the story altogether. Everyone has a stake in this, and to unify the community, I think the story has to be told altogether.
The other challenge that exists in this community, like all communities, is that many of the nonprofits who would do this work are seriously under-capitalized, lack long-term plans, and that's another area where there needs to be encouragement, is for the organizational development that can take those tasks on.
I think one of the key tangible ideas that is percolating is how can we converge some of the interests that already exist. The fort has incredible collections, but they're not seen by anyone. The Barrows Museum has astonishing collections that would, or just unbelievable, it's like a mini Smithsonian. But also, Councilwoman Silves, I wanted to particularly emphasize, the art museum, we have come into a collection that is incredible. It's Spanish colonial and Mexican religious art predominantly. It's one of the finest collections in this nation, even though we're a very small museum, and we were able recently to, you know, purchase some of the great masterpieces. Now, that's about Mexico and Spain, but it's also about our culture and an aspect of our culture that we don't recognize. And when I say "our" culture, it's a shared culture, the language, the food, the customs, and also heritage that goes back before Jamestown was founded. Mexico City was already one of the great cultural capitals of the world. People don't know that, they don't have that own understanding of their heritage and appreciate it. So we want to see how we can make our collections converge, and also, very deliberately, our board is very culturally diverse, our staff is more than 50% Hispanic, and our exhibitions and the artists that we've brought into the community are at least a third reflecting Hispanic culture. So that's an important thing, and I think we're looking, exactly as Mimi said, a way to converge all these things into... The other thing is, we have a story in this community that is dazzling, but it's untold. If you grew up in this town, you might think, you know, I'm just a kid from this little town out in the middle of nowhere, and you start looking at the people who've achieved and created in this community, it's amazing. It's way beyond, I think, the proportion of our size, but no one knows that, and we've got to really get that out there, because we want to inspire our youth about they came from someplace very unique and very important, and reinforce that idea. Thank you.
My, I would say kudos to the plan. I think that it speaks a lot of San Angelo and really who we are and some of the history of what we have and the great places, and you're exactly right. I mean, the fort is a, I mean, it's a gem. It is truly a gem, and that's our centerpiece for where we need to be going in the future and doing more of expanding upon that and what Howard has at there, and it's just, it needs to build from that. And so I applaud that. With that, I will say that I would like to make a motion to adopt the plan as presented.
Second.
I'll second. Three seconds.
I don't know what my ears, maybe it's because I was listening to Mr. Hurstville, but I heard Ms. Farmer, so I'll start there, and I have a motion and a second to approve this as presented. Do I have any public input on this item?
I'd like to make a short comment.
Absolutely.
Okay. In San Angelo, we reach within our past to define our future and to set a course for accomplishment. And I noticed that you're also helping us to define our vision, and I saw in your list of what we need is a unified vision, it was number one on your list, and then came wayfinding. What you're helping, it's kind of a back-and-forth process in which everybody has to pitch in. You guys are helping tremendously because you're defining our path to where we know where we came from and where we're going, and we always seem to link back, you see what I'm saying? We link back to kind of figure out where we're going from here. That's who we are in San Angelo, and really, in San Angelo, another thing I've found is that diversity is a common thread. It's just a way of life, the different types of people that we have here, and we need to, we need to expand. And we have the Asian women are trying to put into an Asian cultural center, and we need all that. So there could be a German, Hispanic, they could go on. I appreciate what you guys are doing, I'm sure we all do, and it looks very successful as far as, and it needs to be published. Howard, I agree with you, publish it, or there's a lot of people that won't be exposed, because we all have to be exposed to who we are to figure out where we're going from here, and everybody needs to be a part of that.
Okay. Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all very much. Okay. All right. I am going to take us into executive session then, and then bring us back, and we'll start with item number 20. Okay, it is 12:16, I'll take us into executive session, we'll come back and start with item number 20, and let me read some of the language taking us into executive session. We are entering executive session under provision of the Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to the Requirement that Meetings Be Open, Section 551.071, to Consult with an Attorney, and also on 551.072, to Deliberate the Purchase, Exchange, Lease, or Value of Real Property. We are now moving to executive session. Folks, I can call the meeting to order. We're at 1:14 and moving back into general session, and item number 20 is public comments for and against annexation of certain properties. Are you just looking for public comments?
Just public comment on this one.
Okay. We're following the schedule on the comments, just on these annexation projects, and this is the second project that she showed us, and today's date is for public comment on that item, so.
Correct. This will be the second of the two public comment periods that we need to have, and then we'll be bringing back to you on February 5th at your next meeting, an ordinance to introduce, to start the annexation process of this property. Of the two that we've talked about, this is the 8.995 acre section immediately adjacent to the Prestonwood addition, extending just north of Mills Pass Drive, as shown on the attached slide. Any questions I can answer?
What have you, have you heard any feedback from?
We've not, neither on this or the other annexation item, we've not had any responses.
And then remind me, the letters of notification went out on these?
Yes.
And remind me?
Just remember, in this case, this is a little different from our zoning cases, and the notification process is a little different. With an annexation of this size, the only notifications that go out are to utility companies, the property owner who initiated it, so it should come as no surprise, and that's really the extent of the notification. So it is handled in a different manner.
Okay. Open this up to public comment at this time? Okay. Ms. Farmer, I believe you cleared our hurdle.
Okay, thank you.
Let's move on to item number 21. This is the first public hearing in consideration of an ordinance annexing property within San Angelo's existing city limits and relating matters.
This is the first of the two annexations. We started with a process on a couple months ago, we'll refresh your memory on that, but again, to refresh your memory on where this site is, this is a 20-acre tract. It is located just outside the city limits in far southwest San Angelo. It is further down Sherwood Way, and it is located at a southward projection of Appaloosa Trail, which is shown here with my pointer, and it is the section of property that is immediately adjacent to the apartment complex, which is currently under development and nearing completion in this area. To remind you of the steps that we've taken, in accordance with state law, we did bring you a petition from the property owners on this particular tract, asking for annexation into the city limits. That started on December 4th. We did, as required, have two public comment sessions, the first on December 18th, the second on January 8th. And as of today, we are bringing you an ordinance that was in your background packets along with a report that briefly summarizes some of the issues in this area, and if all goes well, we will finalize this ordinance upon second reading at your next meeting on February 5th. Won't belabor some of the points that were made in the background report, but in that report, we do talk a little bit about the sort of approach to annexation that's outlined for us in our comprehensive plan adopted in 2009 by this body. We do talk about briefly that annexation should be used in a very purposeful sort of way, and so there are some excerpts from that plan that we outlined for you that give us some specific direction. One of those principles is largely to look at areas where we can reasonably expect immediate or very quick development in that area, looking at areas that are obviously in small enough pieces that we don't take on and encumber the city with large amounts of capital improvements for that area to develop. Luckily, in this particular area, all of the infrastructure's in place, I'll speak about that here in just a moment. Also, we talk about looking at areas that are vacant, so as to annex those before they develop and we essentially might inherit through annexation problematic land use issues. This property is vacant, so again, that is not an issue that we have to worry about in this particular area. Lastly, we go through and talk about the notification process that we alluded to just a moment ago, as well as reminding you about why this particular area is important to the city. I mentioned Appaloosa Trail and the extension of that earlier. We've had some discussion about this, but to refresh your memory, this is an excerpt from the city's thoroughfare plan. Appaloosa Trail is shown here in a light blue, and this shows the planned designation of that Appaloosa Trail to extend, to connect to Oak Grove Boulevard, and then eventually to Loop 306. As you can see in this particular segment of the community right now, Southland Boulevard is really the only lateral accessibility into the heart of this area. So this is an opportunity to continue a particularly important connection for the city. The notifications that we sent out, as I mentioned earlier, those are required to be sent to utility companies, we did so. We're also required to notify the volunteer fire department that handles this area at the time, Tom Green County and S.A.I.S.D., we received no responses from those bodies. We're not required to, but we did take on the added step of sending notification to a variety of city departments that might have some say about the services that could be provided in this area or the needs of that area. So we outlined those specifically in your background report, but just to mention a few, we did work with the police department, the fire department, our water utilities division, our department rather, the parks department, et cetera. We received no responses, or concerns, I should mention, from those groups. We also tried to summarize for you what the main effect of this annexation would be. We have to think about costs for the city, such as maintenance costs, infrastructure improvements, and the like. Fortunately, this area is already provided with infrastructure improvements. When developed, this 20 acres will be required to continue the extension of Appaloosa Trail. The streets in the area are of a good condition. We do have a water and sewer network in this area, so it appears that there's no capital improvements that would be deemed necessary at this time or in the would be deemed necessary at this time or in the immediate future. So essentially, the main effect that you would have in annexing this property today, and lastly, on February 5th, would be the maintenance of the infrastructure in the area and the services extended to that area, no direct costs at this time that we can find. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you.
Mr. Silves.
AJ, go to the very beginning where it shows the map that shows the land. Tell me where the adjacent apartment complex is being built.
This is probably the easier slide to see. This is the 20-acre section. This is a survey of the property. Here is that extension of Appaloosa Trail that's already in place that would continue through the property, and the apartment complex is actually located here on this smaller piece that is around three acres.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Farmer?
Is the apartment complex currently in the city limits, or?
It is currently in the city limits.
Yes, ma'am. Do we have an open burn ban going at this time?
No.
No.
Burn ban is neither in the county nor in the city, I believe, at this time. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Further questions? Public input?
Mayor, I was gonna, on public input, you might get those folks to start moving to the front.
Okay. Thanks for the coaching there. All right. Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's move on then to the next item. This is item number 22. "First Public Hearing In Introduction Of An Ordinance Amending The 2012-2013 Budget For New Projects and Complete Projects and Grants."
Good afternoon. Steve Mathew with the Budget Office. I'm gonna briefly touch on each one of these amendments. There are four amendments within this item. If you have any questions, you can stop me at any time. The First Amendment comes from our NPO department.
Steve, is it okay with you if we kill the messenger?
Sure.
All right.
Feel free.
All right.
I can answer, I can attempt to answer any questions. Again, this is a routine carryover that did not make it on our November 20th routine carryovers. Essentially, what this is, is we budget for what we know is coming in, and then once the reimbursements are approved by the state, then we go ahead and fix that number accordingly.
Okay.
For the Second Amendment, this pertains to the Contra River Project that we have. This is two different grants, as well as a reimbursement from the U.C.R.A. Again, these grants were approved previously by council. We're just going in and fixing, admitting the budget accordingly for those grants.
Okay.
The third item is a, it's a bulletproof vest partnership grant that we receive annually. Again, its formality, we're going in and now admitting the budget because we have received those funds. The last item, this is for, it's Communications Fund. What this is, is this is the contract that was previously approved for the website redesign. I believe Mr. Wilson went in and negotiated to eliminate the annual rate increase. He negotiated to go ahead and pay upfront costs, so we're going ahead and adjusting the fund balance, taking the monies that were earmarked for this, we're adjusting the budget, taking that money out of the fund balance for that project.
Okay. Are there questions on any of the four items? Is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve is presented, item 22.
Second. Okay. Can I re-explain, re-explain the website, please?
Hang on just a moment. I do have a motion and a second, so that's in play, okay? Now we're gonna do further, further questions, and there's a question on item number four about capturing some upfront expenses as opposed to paying for an increase every year is the way you described it.
Right.
We need further explanation on that. Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
Oh, we'll say it.
No, I'm looking at the, at this amount, $67,000. I thought we had a $40,000 approved six or eight months ago, and then you said we could do it for just a few thousand more, so we approved 43, and now it's up to 67.5.
Right. There's an additional $30,000 from what council previously approved, and how that came about is, you may recall, on December the 18th, when I was here last and you approved that, I was asked if I could negotiate down the annual increase for hosting and subscription services, which we had already negotiated from 5% to 3%. I got that eliminated on the condition that we pay that full five-year contract upfront. So by paying the full cost of the contract upfront, we are eliminating the 3% increase year over year.
Well, then that's my mistake, because I understood that we were approving 43,000, period. From 40, we were adding a little bit so that we could get these benefits, and it would be 43,000, period, outside.
This meant-
I didn't know there was another 24,000 being added to that.
Well, again, this is the council's choice, and so the choice is either we can pay this on a year-to-year basis and incur a 3% rate increase year over year, or we can pay the entire contract upfront and eliminate the increase altogether.
And did you do the math?
Uh, no, sir, I'm afraid I didn't, but it would be 3% per year, starting at $6,000 year over year. So, you know, you're talking in the neighborhood of, you're better at math than I am.
Right, but four years, right? So you're talking about-
We're talking five, this would be a five-year contract.
Uh, four increases.
But four increases, yes, sir.
It'd be over 30,000.
Four increases. Well, if you sit there and do the math, if the first one's six, okay, and it's, you, he paid 24,000 extra, 43 to 67 is what they said, so the math on it is gonna be slight savings by paying 67, but he paid, he paid a chunk of the 3% increases upfront, saved some money by saying, by paying it upfront.
And when you look at time value of money also, basically, the interest we'll be earning of holding on to that money is about 1.5% maybe?
That's right.
So we're actually coming out ahead.
It's less than 3%. That's right. And so the 3% without compounding, 3% of 6,000, I think, is $180, so $180 a year without compounding. And, you know, if we kept that money, and if we could earn 1.5% over that time period, if we invested with that horizon in mind, we might could do that, we might earn half of that. So there is a net saving. It's not a tremendous amount, but it is, it is-
A better option.
A net savings.
Michael, throw a compound rate in there, just hypothetical, what, 180 a year times what?
Well, the way that compounding would work is the first year you'd pay the 6,000, the second year you'd pay 6,180. The next year, you'd pay 3% on top of 6,180, which would be another 180.
It'd be way over 24,000.
That's why, it wouldn't be way over, it would be some over. That's why I said he saved some money.
Saved 1,050 bucks.
Okay.
1,050 bucks.
Mr. Silves?
Yes.
There's your math. That's why I was asking if he did the math.
Thank you for doing the math for me, Councilman Alexander.
But he did about a thousand, he saved about $1,050 by negotiating to pay upfront as opposed to paying 3% increases over time.
That we would have paid if we had-
Yes, sir.
That's correct. And again, the reason that we did this is because the council asked us if we could negotiate that 3% down further.
Right.
Plus interest that we could accrue.
So you went from the 3% to down to zero, but then you paid 24,000 extra upfront.
That's correct.
That's correct. Prepaid insurance is what it is. Yeah. Okay.
You all right?
I just understood it was 43,000, period. I didn't understand it was 43-plus.
Well, it was-
And I asked that question. I asked, what is the total amount of this contract? And I was told 43,000.
Mr. Morrison, I think you're confusing what the cost of the redesign of the website is. This is not related to the redesign of the website. This is related to the annual cost of the hosting of the website, plus the subscription services-
Okay.
-that the council previously approved.
Okay. Well, how did you dodge, dodge all of that? Huh? And why are you standing to the side there?
Just waiting for approval.
Are you expecting somebody else to come up, or?
Hey, if we do something to him, do you send a bigger guy next time? What is the deal on this?
It's hard, it's getting hard to recruit him bigger than this, so.
Okay. All right. All right, I do have an-
Aim well.
I do have a motion and a second that we accept this as presented. Is there further public input? Let me call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number 23, "Consideration Of Approving A Naming Rights Proposal For The San Angelo-"
That's been tabled.
We did table it. Thank you all for your help. Item number 24, I have, I require a lot. "Discussion Of," number 24, "Discussion Of Residential Customers' Water Consumption Information." This is a presentation by our Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer, Michael Bing.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We presented some information last time related to residential water usage. For usage during the month of November, we got a request to come back for use and present usage amounts for August, and so the presentation you're gonna see is gonna hopefully look very familiar. Same format, but you will see that there are more customers in those higher usage ranges. I think we had six or eight in that 81 to 100,000-gallon usage in November, and here in August, we have 33 of them. And that is, I think, very intuitive. You would expect during those hotter months with greater demand on plants that-
Irrigation.
That, that there would be more irrigation utilization. You can still see that, however, that the bulk of this pie is occupied by 20,000 gallons or less. So, still a, I think, especially for August, a picture where people are conscious of their water usage and for the overwhelming majority of folks. This talks about consumption in these relative levels. So in this month, in August, 69% of the water utilized by residential customers was utilized by customers using 0 to 20,000 gallons. If we go to the extreme, for customers above 100,000 gallons in usage, they represented 1% of the water usage. So while these numbers represent a large amount of water usage, you can see that, on an individual basis, you can see that as far as our customer base goes, in the month of August, it represented only 1.2% of the total usage by residential customers. And so we do think of that as high usage and extreme usage, but it, it's good to see that that is not a widespread practice that-
And that's almost-
But said another way, I mean, if you told, if you told those people you can use no water, you would still use 98.8% of the water that you used in August.
That's exactly right. If you could completely cut those customers off, that would only affect the total usage by 1.2%.
And that's, and you're looking at, that's 2, 2,976,000?
Nope.
That's two-
Great question.
2.9 million gallons.
Yes.
One of the things we thought about, it's, it's easy to think about this when we're financially oriented, when we're talking about trying to pay bills, pay for contracts. It's much more difficult in a conservation-oriented time or in a drought, but these customers at the bottom of the page are our most lucrative customers. They pay a higher cost per 1,000 gallons than these people down here. Recall that our rate structure starts with lower amounts, and as you use greater amounts of water, you pay a greater rate per 1,000. And so Mary has worked up for me, a user at 24,000 gallons would pay an estimated $95.05 for their water charge. For somebody at 65,000 gallons, she's made this math hard for me, which would be roughly two and a half times that number, a customer would pay $360.17.
That's your 2.33% group, with 61 to 80,000.
At what drought level? Is this current drought level, one?
24,000, she's computed as 95.05. 65,000 is 360.17. So for two and a half times the usage, you have over three and a half times the dollars, almost four times-
In the current level we're in?
Yes.
Is that where?
That's what you said?
Yes.
And it gets worse, is it?
Well, keep on going.
I'm sorry.
Hundred, no, I'm talking about 100,000 gallons. What, what, what am I paying?
Oh.
You don't have-
I asked her to compute one example to illustrate the point that these users, these high-end users, pay a, pay a higher amount per 1,000, and from a financial standpoint, they're our lucrative customers. They're customers which are lucrative to us. That's a difficult thing to think about in a drought, but when you're talking about a financial picture, you want customers who pay those high rates. But you're right, it is a balance between collecting the revenues and having a product to sell.
But again, if I'm using 100,000 gallons, what, what's the dollar, what's surcharge over my usage? You know, we're at a, and I lose track of numbers, but what?
Well, I mean, you have to go back and show you on a different presentation where the different numbers kick in in drought level one. He's saying he didn't do that today. He, they, he gave you two examples, 20, 20-something thousand and 60-something thousand, to show you that if you use three times as much water, 20-something thousand paid, you paid $95, 60-something thousand, you paid 360. So he was trying to show you that you don't pay three times as much, or, you know, you use three times as much water, but you pay four and a half times as much money, but he didn't give you any other examples. He didn't go further.
I can only imagine what a 100,000 gallon user pays.
Right.
Well, that last 1,000 that they're using, that last strata in this example, is $10.52 per 1,000. For example, the first 2,000 that you buy, you pay $2.32 per 1,000. So that first 1,000 is $2.32. By the time you've used 100 of them, and that actually kicks in much lower, you're paying five times that amount nearly.
$10 versus $2.
Right. And so-
Per 1,000.
It's, from a financial picture, we like to see people using in those ranges. From a conservation picture, it's, it's a different, it's a different answer.
And it, right, and it's a complicated world because of evaporation. A lot of, I mean, at some point, you can't save yourself to prosperity because the water goes away anyway. So, I mean, you gotta, you know, you gotta, there's some balance in all of this. You, you could say, no one can use water, and then it just would sit in the lakes and go away, so. And so like, if I wasn't looking over here, I'd know that I need to recognize someone over here. Ms. Farmer?
I need some help here. Somebody remind me, I'm recalling back this summer when we were struggling with when rates kick in at different drought levels, and I was under the impression that the next tier level of per 1,000 gallon expense did not kick in until we all agreed on 10,000 gallons. That it doesn't kick in at 2,000, at 3,000, at 4,000. It was, it was 10,000 gallons. If they exceeded 10,000, that's when it kicked into the drought level range.
Good question. It, the base rates do change at those early levels, but those drought levels kick in at higher levels. So you are remembering correctly that at higher levels, those drought stages begin to have an impact, but for just regular usage, for example, the first 2,000 are $2.32 each. The next three are $3.46 apiece.
See, that's what I'm not understanding is, I was under the understanding that it stayed at that same rate up to the 10,000, when we're in drought stage, and then after the 10,000 gallons, it kicks in at the higher rate.
No, the, our water rates are basically progressive, just like our beautiful tax code that we have. You know, as you start to use more, I mean, your, the rates go up from, and I had that somewhere, but it goes from 0 to 3,000, I believe, and then 3,000 to 6,000, 7,000, then et cetera, but the rates incrementally go up.
So what you're saying is, what we do on the drought levels starts, starts at 10,000, but it adds to an already progressive?
Correct.
They're two different systems.
But they, but the first one's, right, but the first one's progressive anyway.
Right.
Right?
The second one's progressive.
You pay more, and then you, and then we add a-
But they don't work together.
Right.
So you ought to see Mary's formula, which she showed me. It's pretty darn complicated, and she keeps up with it, because, because you gotta merge them together, and she has to put that into the coding on the bill, and you get it on your bill. It's very complicated. Because we didn't merge them together. We didn't start the points.
Right. I got you.
We could've done maybe 9,000 or something. It would've been the same point, but it's not that way.
I got you.
And Johnny asked, how much of that was surcharge? And that's what I'm looking for, is eventually the bill shows how much was surcharge, so that the customer knows what we got them on, on the drought levels. what we got them on, on the drought levels.
You wanna see if you have that? I'm looking.
Mr. Silves, you asked for the August information, I wanna make sure that you kinda gotten the picture that you wanted.
Yeah, I, I did get a picture, you know, it's kinda alarming. Either way, I mean, you've got twenty-five thousand customers using ninety-one percent of, you know, the usage, and then you have twenty-two residential folks using over a hundred thousand gallons a month, is that?
Over a hundred? Yes, sir.
Hundred and one thousand and above.
In August, over a hundred, but I think in November, I think there were none over a hundred. None over a hundred in November.
Well, there's probably not gonna be any in November, December, January, February.
Well, we do get them to show up that way, but they tend to be leaks. You know, somebody will have a hundred thousand gallon bill, and their normal usage is far below that, what happens is they come in and make a claim for a leak because they've had a pipe break, or, or just a leak or something. But, we're not seeing routine, or we didn't see in four November, routine type usage above a hundred.
Are, are you able to distinguish, like, these twenty-two folks, or even the thirty-three, are these, are we talking about large properties? Do you know, does Mary know, or?
We didn't look into that as part of this exercise. I think we can probably look internally at those addresses and, and make some determination, but there is a privacy line there, at some point, we would reach and would not want to cross, but we didn't even go that way. We thought we'd see what you thought about the usage and go from there.
It was awesome to see that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Not asking for action.
Nope, just a discussion item. Okay, at this time then, I'm gonna move us into follow-up and administrative issues, and item number twenty-five, the, the only thing was whether or not someone wanted to ask for an agenda item in a future executive session. There was nothing acted on that requires action in the open session, so, and then twenty-six is announcements, I made the announcements of the, I made the announcements of the, of the kinda railroad-oriented stuff, and Mr. Valenzuela's made good progress on that, and the housing-oriented deal, and you've made some progress, and you're moving forward on that, so I think that's taking care of itself. And, and so, at this time, it's a consideration of future agenda items. I know earlier, Mr. Morrison asked that we consider Mr. Vardeman, and I have been asked by a group of people in, in that group that we consider another gentleman for appointment, and so, I think we'll, we do need to take that on at the next, at the next council meeting, and-
Well, shouldn't the topic, I mean, well, the topic should be whether we assign or not.
Amen. Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry.
And then-
I didn't mean, I didn't mean, yeah, I said I had a person, he had a person, and then, and then the topic of whether you wanna do anything.
Okay.
Okay, and whether or not you wanna do anything. I mean, we're a hundred days from an election, but, but we're also getting some guidance, guidance on, do we have to call one within ninety days a special election?
Right.
Or is there a way for us to figure out how, how to let this just be part of the normal election?
Exactly.
So, so we've got a little bit of work that we're gonna need some help from staff on, okay? But, so by the time we have another council meeting, we should be able to know what we can and can't do on that election issue, and know what we want to do or not as it relates to a six to nothing vote on, a unanimous vote to place someone in that position.
A lot of three threes.
Okay?
Why don't, why don't we put this on the agenda for discussion, to see if we're even interested in filling the position?
And let them update us on-
But also, the education, right?
Yes, yes.
What, what does the, what does it require and all that?
Let's, let's put it on for discussion, and then we'll know the next meeting what we want to do.
That's a great idea, okay?
Because you saw today, we couldn't sneeze in, in, you know, in fear of having a, or not having a worm, so.
Yeah.
I'd hate to, to be in that predicament all the time, because, you know, one of us could easily get ill, or something else comes up, and then you guys, your hands are tied, you can't sneeze, so.
Be interesting, you know, I know that you, you operated with a six-member council for some time when I was running for mayor, so I've watched it, I know, and I know that it can function, and, and there are some, some, Mr. Silves, that would say that we'd be better off if we couldn't function, so.
Ah.
Anyway, okay. What other future agenda items?
Mayor, I do have, we talked at the last meeting as far as the strategic planning workshop for the nineteenth of February, that's out of the question, we'll actually be out of town on the Porsha Plains item, so, we're looking at, then the final week of February, if we could set aside a full day within that week, and even if we went into the following Tuesday, that would be February the twenty-sixth, that would be a possibility for, for you. I can have Becky coordinate with all of you as far as a date or time that would be best for all of you.
That's council day, right?
No, the nineteenth is a council day.
Twenty-sixth is the, right, twenty-sixth would be an extra meeting?
It'll be an extra meeting day, but I, I do need the, the full day.
So, so you're saying start it on the nineteenth?
No, no, we'll be out of town on the nineteenth with Porsha Plains.
So, do it on the twenty-sixth?
On the twenty-sixth, if I could have a full day, that'd be wonderful. Twenty-sixth?
Good, good.
We're good, okay, the twenty-sixth. And we'll start at the regular time, we, we would, City Council meeting on the nineteenth of the morning.
Tell me about the nineteenth now.
Porsha Plains, um-
I know, but will we lose enough people that we need to cancel that meeting completely?
Charlotte will be, Ms. Farmer will be out of town also. Other than that, I don't believe, I think everybody else should be in town on the nineteenth, is that correct?
I'm here.
Okay, so as long as all five, we have five, we'll be okay.
So, we would have a normal meetings on, on like the fourth and nineteenth, or whatever?
The fifth and the nineteenth, and then we'd have-
And then a workshop.
On the twenty-sixth, correct.
Twenty-sixth, okay, thank you, thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you.
The, Sean from the Concho, Concho Valley Transit District has informed me that the terms are coming up for the city's appointees to that board. Those appointees are all council members, is the reason I bring that up, and I believe that Mr. Alexander, Mr. Silves, and Mr. Adams have been our appointees, and with those terms expiring, and with it being-
For the transit board?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And with it being council members, I wanted to give you guys the heads up, so you could be thinking about it, and, of course, we'll be following up with the city clerk to make sure we jump through those hoops properly. I think they're, they would like, I think the email they sent requested those names by February ninth, which would mean that the next meeting, we'll need to make those decisions if we choose to comply.
Okay. Okay, other items?
I have one that I'm just gonna throw, throw out there, throw up there. I have, it's been brought to my attention that the sale of K-2 is running rampant in our community, and I don't know whether we have our hands tied, it kinda sounds like we do. State law, I guess, supersedes our local law, or everything's okay, so I don't, I'm just throwing that out there. I know there's some citizens concerned that that is going-
Well, my, my understanding of it is that we, I mean, we passed as wide a net ordinance as we could, but that the issue that gets us in trouble, according to what I understand, is when they change a compound, whether or not our ordinance still-
Exactly.
Still covers it or not?
We can't discuss this, but I certainly did communicate to one and all that the state has, has determined in two thousand and eleven, they determined it was a controlled substance, and they put it on a drug schedule. It is now classified as a Class B misdemeanor at the lower level on up to felony and state felonies.
So, walk us through, okay, so-
I really kind to-
But we have an ordinance, so walk us through whether or not it needs to be a future agenda item to look at the ordinance, I guess, or is the state law already superseding and we move on? I mean, I think that's the discussion.
That would be the, the position that I would take if, if I was requested at a future agenda, to talk about the viability of an ordinance that's now preempted, because the sale of that drug or purchase possession is now preempted.
How about we add it to a future to discuss that thoroughly and possibly include chief in that too, so.
Perfect, great.
Okay, what else?
All right, Fred Adams has resigned, and he was the other person on the Housing Committee for looking at the Kleinshell oil boom. I'm on that committee, so I don't have a partner, that's, that's part of it, we probably should've put somebody else on that. And then, the second thing is, this is, this next meeting is the meeting we need to be talking about, do we move the South Pool water? Because if you look at the evaporation schedule and when to move it, you wanna have it moved by June, when you're in the peak of summer, and we're, and we're losing many thousands of acre-feet of water. We waited too long last year. I told people we wouldn't make that mistake again, so we need to get on it and discuss it at least.
Okay, so, Mr. Dixon can start boning up on that issue, and, and we should talk about that soon. I agree with you completely, so that should be a future agenda item for sure, that we're talking about when, when would we want to take water from the South Pool to the North Pool at Twin Vues, okay? And, as far as pumping, like we did last year, and so, great, what, the other issue, is it Ms. Farmer, and who's on, who's working on the railroad issue? Those two, the railroad issue though seems to be fairly slow, and-
Railroad actually issue, yeah, we'll discuss that. I did kind of brief you on what I discovered, actually, out of a procedural, and I need to brief you also, so.
Okay. The housing issue then was going to be Mr. Alexander and Mr. Adams, and that is dealing with the, and you've got movement on that too.
Yeah, we do.
With the Realtors Association and the Apartment Association and the-
I'm meeting with Apartment Association this week, actually, so we have the Builders Association, and also the Association of Realtors, and now the Apartment Association coming up this weekend.
Okay, I'll, I'll join you on that. Okay, I do-
Have one I just thought about, and I'm reminded every time I come to the meeting, but maybe Rick, or I put a bug in Carl's ear, but can we look at, or what can we do to get them a new marquee or LED sign up front? Are we looking into it?
Who?
Our, our sign out here in front of the convention center? The old one? The old sign, replace that, are we?
It is something that actually, I think the Civic Board, the Vents Board has discussed, and there's various options. One, there are some retaining dollars from when we can, we renovated this building, dealing with the floor, but there's also a discussion that will be coming to y'all in the future about how to utilize hot dollars that are coming in, so that's a broader discussion, so I would say that that may actually enter into those-
Good.
... discussions as a whole, but that discussion's much bigger than just that, so.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?